Meeting back to order. Have a motion to reconvene the public session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're back to public session. Linda, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
You have to give a notice.
All right, then, read this again? I thought I read this already.
No, but you weren't supposed to.
Okay, no, okay. Well, I didn't do it so well first time. In accordance with the provision of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the middle school, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I have a flag. I have a flag.
Well, just after the announcement.
Mine, mine.
I'll be looking. This is a comedy portion of our meeting.
Yep.
We'll take the rest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz? Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Linda, are there any communications with the board?
Yes. We received several communications since the last meeting. The board received a letter from a student, which I know you all received. Then the mayor wanted the board to know that the League of Municipalities announced the Lewis Bay Second Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition for high school juniors and seniors planning to continue their education after high school. There is a suggested timeframe. I am assuming that the mayor's office is spearheading this. February 1st was announcing the contest by the mayor's office. The mayor's office was supposed to or should be creating a local judging committee before March 1st, and the deadline for submission of entries to the hometown mayor is March 10th. So that's exciting. Darah Botvinnik sent an email to all the middle school staff regarding the success of Diversity Day 2015, which was held on Thursday, January 22nd. She mentioned by name in her letter all the staff that helped to pull the day together, thanked the teachers for giving awesome workshops such as Rising India, Pin Wheels for Peace, and Desegregating the Military, thanked them for supervising, participating, moving furniture, opening the walls, setting up computers, et cetera. She also thanked the Technology Department and Tempco for various setups and for helping to make things run smoothly, and she thanked the Teen Center for giving a number of workshops. So it was a very successful day. We received a correspondence from the Make-A-Wish Foundation from New Jersey to Ms. Angie Harper from the DECA Club, thanking her for their support. The DECA Club's Make-A-Wish Halloween Walk fundraiser raised a total of $3,816 and helped to fund a student named Ami's wish to go to Walt Disney World in Florida. So congratulations and thanks to the DECA organization.
I think that was sent to the full board. Thanks to, I think Jerry sent that around to all of us.
Yes, it was a message.
And who's doing curriculum?
Curriculum is Michelle today.
Michelle, I have a read-in for you, may I?
Yeah, we also, we have another read-in as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Linda, please.
There's going to be another read-in for curriculum.
I guess we can give it to Michelle.
No, she has it.
Oh, she has it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Can I have an approval, a motion to approve the minutes of December 8th executive session revised and January 20th regular executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any conversations? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berg, oh, sorry. Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes, on December 8th, abstain on January 20th.
Ms. Gowan?
Abstain on December 8th and yes on the 20th.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Abstain on December 8th and yes on the 20th.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Abstain and yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, on the 8th, abstain on the 20th.
I'm happy to declare that we have passed the minutes for December 8th.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Mr. Soto, can we have the superintendent's report, please?
But wait, was Jerry at that meeting? Jerry was not at that meeting.
You don't have to be at the meetings to approve minutes. It's...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Then why do we always abstain when we're not at meetings?
It's just...
How can you approve minutes of meetings that you're not at?
What you approve, sorry, go on, you explain.
I'm sorry, I mean, that's what we've always done.
No, it's not stupid, yeah.
I just abstained because I wasn't at the January 20th meeting, how can I?
So what you're approving is that the minutes were approv...
You are approving that the minutes are an accurate representation of what happened at that meeting.
But how can you if you weren't there?
Right.
Are you changing your vote, Ms. Versa?
Well, yeah, because I forgot, it was back to December 8th.
December 8th.
Was, I don't know if I was here.
You don't know?
No.
Can you look at the minutes and see if you were on the...
No, I can't get on them.
Oh, okay.
I don't think I was here for that one.
No.
You don't, but you don't have to be here to approve the minutes. It's just, my understanding is that what you're approving is that you're proving that they were properly compiled by Linda's office, not even the content of the minutes, is my understanding.
Then we should all always approve all the minutes.
You are more than welcome to.
People do.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was accuracy, okay.
No, I mean, I don't know, Linda?
I don't have a problem with the minutes of December 8th, I just wasn't there.
If they are reasonable, then you can approve them. There's nothing to say you...
It doesn't matter if I wasn't here.
There's nothing to say you're not allowed to approve.
No.
That's why it hasn't been approved all these times, because only people that were at the meeting were...
It's just the way we've always done it, but I voted for minutes that I haven't been for, just in the need, on the need before.
Kind of just goes against common sense. Was Jonathan consulted on that?
Huh?
Was Jonathan consulted on it?
To vote for minutes that you're not here to witness.
You can vote, there's no, there's no, I mean, this is, you can vote, as a board member, it's not about the attorney, it's what you want to do individually, anyway. It's your, it's your own, it's your own perspective of...
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, sorry.
You're not prohibited from approving minutes because you weren't at a meeting. If the minutes are reasonable to you, you may approve them.
What happens if we can't approve a set of minutes because we don't have a majority?
Well, it's a violation of CUSAC if they really wanted to scrutinize, but usually they don't go to that level.
Right, because it actually seems to make sense to me that you not vote on minutes, you know? Right, I mean, I actually think...
No, I mean, it's what the practice is, but it's also what, my point is that it's not been out of the norm, or sorry, is out of the norm, it's not unheard of to vote for minutes that you were not there for.
I think in general, we try to...
I agree.
Yeah, so if you weren't...
Yeah, I'm looking at it, you weren't, you weren't here and Dan wasn't here, and that's been the problem. We haven't had a combination of five of us here because most of it...
We might as well not put it on unless we're sure we're going to have the same five.
Unless you feel comfortable supporting them.
Are you changing your vote, Ms. Versa?
Okay. I will...
We will be presenting the December 8th minutes at the next board meeting.
We will have a conversation with the attorney as well to get legal guidance. I know there's no, there's no issue here, but that's, we'll wait until we talk to the attorney.
Non-attendance.
Yeah, so, exactly, yeah, I mean, I know, I know. If you look at how legislative bodies do it, it's fine. Okay, Mr. Soto, can we have the superintendent's report, please?
Absolutely. Let's begin with our student update, if we may.
Okay. Okay, so, we haven't had meetings in a while, so we have a little bit of catching up to do, but I won't go back too far. The farthest back I'll go is midterms, and those went well. The Regionals Choir had their performance in Monroe. This is something that choir students audition for and can get into, and so we just wanted to congratulate the students that took part in that. And those students are Jamie Achinow, Nick De La Cruz, Michelle Fan, Yulin Ni, Olivia Walansky, and Talia Sklafani. And then with sports, the winter sports are actually winding down now. I think this is the last week for winter sports. The girls' basketball team, this happened January 31st, but it's still an exciting statistic, they won in the last 30 seconds of their game with two foul shots by Rachel Byer. And the boys' senior night is tomorrow at 6:00 PM, so we should all go and support. And the girls' senior night is Thursday. Wrestling, a little while ago, won their meet against Rutgers Prep, and this is exciting because they often don't win as a team, even if individuals win matches because they're so small this year, so that was exciting. Additionally, Sam Guerrero is district champion, and Jose Ruiz placed fourth, so congrats to them. The DECA members received awards during a meeting on 19th for the Regionals competition, and the state competition is going on now, which is why Vivek isn't here today. Master Corral has resumed after Mr. Jung's paternity leave, he's back and everything's going well with that. We're really proud of our HP Mock Trial team, that's something that started this year. They placed top four in Middlesex, and this is a great achievement because we're such a small school. We won two rounds and we beat Matouchin, so that's exciting. So we'd just like to congratulate the participants on that. Amar Venagopal, Lucas Irvine, Becca Chant, Michelle Wang, Chris Dow, Olivia Bridges, Tomas Sanchez, David Isaacson, and Micah Gartenberg for their hard work and achievements in this new program. We had a talent show and that went well. Now that Ms. Maharana has left, we have a new robotics advisor, Mr. Moore, so that's going well. We also hosted Mr. Highland Park, which hopefully some of you attended. The show was funny, exciting, filled with some talent and less inappropriate than in previous years, so that's a success. We also raised a lot of funds for the senior class, which is the main goal. Mr. Highland Park is Jeffrey Muniz of the senior class. So in progress sort of things are, as we mentioned in the previous meeting, the Student Congress held a funding meeting to give out some funds to some clubs on Wednesday, February 4th, and the funds were awarded to The Fling, who wants to send some writers to a journalism workshop, as well as invest in some folders to preserve the old issues. We have Fling issues dating back to like the 1920s, and we want to preserve them, so they're using some money to...
Jerry and I would like that.
Create special folders. And then funds were also awarded to Rumen/RMC, who want to raise money to make the trip more affordable for students. We also held a video game tournament to raise money for Student Congress, so this type of awarding of funds can be possible. The tournament was a Super Smash Brothers tournament, and Patrick Lu won. The senior class is also holding a fundraiser that's happening right now. We're selling chocolate, so if you...
Do you have any on you?
...like chocolate. I did not bring it with me.
You missed a sale.
I think I did. But it's not due till February 25th, so. And then we just have two questions, the first being, at the last meeting, you, I think it was, Mr. Sherman said that you might be interested in us doing another survey about the elective classes, and we were just wondering if the elective classes you had presented or like had, that was, appeared in the last meeting, you know, if those had like moved forward or if there was anything with that, or if there was something specific you wanted us to ask, so that's one. And then Haley Conrad and the students of the Environmental Club have this idea for a water bottle filling station, and I know it sounds weird initially because you just think, well, we have water fountains, but...
We've looked at them before.
Oh, what?
Wait, you've explained it, yeah, I know what you're talking about, though. We've looked at them.
They're nice.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just a really easy place to fill up water bottles and it's encouraged using reusable water bottles, so.
So in response to that, Linda and I looked, there are water fountains that are made that have the water fountain on the bottom, and then at the top of it have a spout. When we replace our water fountains, that would probably be something that we go towards.
Do you, do you know like when they're replaced or is that like...
When they break?
Yeah, beyond that...
Don't invite people.
Yeah, don't, yeah, please, please. Beyond that, it just...
It's a cost factor.
It's a, yeah, it's a cost factor, but it's something, Linda and I actually saw a model that we liked, it just, when they break, that's when we do them, for the most part. Otherwise, I tell you to use the sink, but I'm all for using reusable bottles.
Okay, and anything about the survey?
Survey is up to you guys, it was just a suggestion from my end. As you can see, we're going into budget season. We approved new electives last year that we haven't had in a long time. We're proving, we're going to be talking about a new course today. It's just, you know, as you guys may know what you want to learn, sometimes more than we do, if you have anything along those lines, it's something that we'd have a conversation about, the Curriculum Committee would have a conversation about, Israel would have a conversation about, in terms of, you know, budgeting, because when we do approve a new course, there are many things that go into it, a teacher, books, professional development, so it is a cost factor, but we also, at least I believe, that our book, our high school in particular, might be a little bit out of date of what the electives that we offer for the times that we're in, and could use some updating, and maybe some student initiatives might be, go a long way.
All right, thank you.
Can I tack on to two things just about Project, speaking of fundraisers for Project Graduation, actually, we're having our first, we're doing a few mini fundraisers through the spring. Our first one is this Saturday in the high school cafeteria. Mrs. Zara is going to lead with some storytime and activities. It's going to be a pancake breakfast for... Yeah, we all have seen it. So $20 a family, and the next Friday night at Pinot's, we're doing a, there's going to be a trivia night, which I believe that's also $20, it's the magic number, but...
When's the pancake one again?
Anything you're not, I'm sorry?
When's the pancake one again?
Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yeah, this Saturday.
I have two kids, I like pancakes.
Good, good, there you go.
And I'm sure I love Ms. Zara.
For sure.
Yeah.
That's true.
So maybe we could repeat the details. Where, when?
At the high school cafeteria. Wow, what time are we starting? I think nine.
Nine.
Yeah, nine to 11, nine to 12.
Has it gone out via paperless?
Actually, it has gone out paperless, so if you want to check your paperless. And I'm sure we'll be sending it out again by the, by the end of the week, just to be persistent.
Where are you guys going this year?
To Cook, the Cook Rec Center, Coca-Cola.
Nice.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on this year?
Yes. Okay, let's proceed with the enrollments for the month of January at Irving. 314 students, five transferred in, 10 transferred out. Bartle, 462, five transferred in, six transferred out. Middle school, 333, three transferred in, one transferred out. The high school, 465 students, one transferred in, three transferred out. We have a total of 1,574 students for the month of January.
Israel, I have a question. Do districts track mobility rates and take a look at that? I mean, I was just wondering if that's mandated reporting? Because it's kind of interesting to look at, you know, do we have an average mobility rate, do we have a greater than average?
Absolutely, sure. Would you like that?
Yeah, personally, I would, I don't know if anybody else would be interested in that. I mean, I think it's, it's just interesting information to have, because certainly mobility turns, translates into achievement and...
Absolutely.
And we're below 1,300 again for a while.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Today, the district went through an extensive process, the CUSAC, that's Quality Single Accountability Continuum. Today was our CUSAC.
Dude, and your eyes are still open, that's amazing.
Very extensive process, but I want to thank publicly Jen Knapp and Bill Shlala for their leadership in facilitating the process and with the entire CUSAC team, so I'm very appreciative for the hard work that they put into this. I think we did very well. And having said that, we have new mascots. One of the things that we've been working very diligently in is improving our communication and also branding the district, and one of the areas that we've been looking at is rethinking, we're looking at the school mascots. If there's anything that we would like is some continuity across all of the schools, and so are we ready to share what the new mascots look like, Chris?
We have them?
Yeah, we do.
This could be the most, this could literally be the most contentious thing.
There we go. No, they've been approved by kids, teachers, and the administrators, we're just sharing them with the community now.
Is this still an owl or are we going to use it?
And not, it has to be approved by the alumni.
I think you're going to love it. I think they're nice. I think they're good, I hope. Do you agree? Okay, here we go.
Yeah. It better not be the owl.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah, I think it has...
Jerry, I'm okay with that.
First, I feel apologies, we had a much better presentation.
Can you, sorry, can you use a mic?
First, I must apologize, we had a lot better presentation, but as soon as I put on this machine, technology, it rebooted the machine four times. So, yeah, what we're doing, Saskia and myself, with the guidance of Israel, put together new mascots. We took it to the principals first, they all loved them, so then we took it to their staff, and with some minor tweaks from recommendations from the staff, we all came upon these mascots. So let's take a look. And of course, the clicker's not going now. Here's the new Irving mascot.
What's on the shoulder?
Well, that's on, in every mascot, should I tell them or should I let them find out?
You should look at it carefully.
It's now, I know, I know it's now, I see the owl.
All right, well, let's go to Bartle, then you can see. As you see, the owl grows up in every school, so we want to incorporate the owl since it's a district mascot. And then when you go into middle school, the owl, you know, they're hitting that age where they think they can do everything. Start flexing their wings, and then we get into the high school, and we have them ready to go.
Owl's a what?
HP. HP, holding the HP in the owl symbol. All right. So are we ready?
Sorry, is there another word there?
It says owl's and it's holding the H and the P.
Is there an OF between the claws?
Owl's up on the park.
Got it.
Comments? All right. I like one clap.
I just wanted to ask, did the students, did the students see these yet?
I don't believe the students, it was just the staff and the administration saw them.
However, this particular mascot, this was an offshoot of a, one that was drawn, right? It was painted in the high school.
Yes, if you walk in the front of the high school, and right in between the doors, there's a huge owl. Saskia tried working on it, we tried getting a picture of it. It just has so many colors and details to it, we can't put it in there as the mascot, but it will be incorporated into the high school page. We are going to work on that, and we discussed that with Mr. Assiter and the student that drew it.
My, my initial reaction is that, at least from here, I can't make out that it's an HP.
The of HP is hard to see.
Yeah, well, the of I can see, just the H looks like it's covered by the talons.
Okay.
I agree, I love them, aside from that, they're fantastic. I agree that it's a little unclear, but they're like great mascots.
And please, Saskia did the drawing, she did the vectoring.
Thank you.
Hold on, no, we can't, we can't, sorry, Saskia, we can't do. No, 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 we can't, we can't, no, sorry, sorry.
I know what she's trying to say.
You can come, you can...
She, she could join me.
Yeah, feel free to come up and make a presentation, but we can't...
I know what she's saying, the colors aren't coming as good, as crisp as they should be.
All right, so let's, Jar, no, I like them, and I really appreciate the work by you and Saskia to put this together. What does the board want to do in terms of moving forward with the new mascots? I don't think, I think we, as the board, should weigh in on them, and the larger community and students as well.
I'd like a little time to digest them, I think.
Yeah, so...
I would like, I'm sorry, I'm going to add, I think this is very meaningful for the kids.
Agreed.
And I think that this is something they should definitely have a say in.
Okay, I agree.
I mean, I don't know that that means taking a vote or anything, I don't know, but even just to let them comment would be meaningful.
I remember when I was here, when we changed the mascot, there were like three or four options, and we voted on one, one of them.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say that the student who painted the owl is Senior Janet Choi, and she's an amazing artist, and I just wanted to say that.
I just wanted to, is that the same one who did the Friend Finder cover?
No, I'm not sure.
Okay, it was just an amazing cover. Just wanted to put that out in the public.
No, that was a third grader.
It was a third grader.
But Janet Choi's a little bit different.
The what?
Owl.
No, yeah, hers is like rainbow, you know, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to incorporate that into the high school website the best we can.
It just seemed like...
We tried, we tried working with her, and we worked hard on it for a couple of weeks trying to get it, and it's just such detail and colors that it's very hard to put into the vector image.
Maybe Ms. Choi would like to help out with that?
She was. She was involved, and then we got into AP time and stuff like that, exams, and so we tried to work the best we could with her. Saskia did sit down with her a few times.
Okay, cool.
So I think, let's digest this for a little bit, I think we should have a conversation about how to move forward, and I think we should include more people in that conversation. I like them, my initial reaction, just, it's a big, for me, it's a big decision, I'm sure for everybody, just, it's our, it's our branding, and for me, I see a different owl when I see it, I'm sure Saskia actually sees a different owl when she sees it as well, and...
And I'm here every year with you guys when the owl comes up, when...
And I definitely know Jerry sees an owl.
No, I think they're great, it's beautiful, and I like to have the owl on the, I mean, you know, Irving, Bartle, the middle school, those are different, but I think the high school, I don't understand how, why you change your mascot, like our colors are maroon, you know, the maroon white or marooning gray, whatever, and the owl should be, to me, the owl that it's always been, but that's just my opinion.
So...
Not that these are not beautiful, but it's not it.
And I guess, I mean, I know, there's Irving Dragon, there's the Bartle Dofin, and those are traditional, but, I mean, the little owl is adorable.
It's adorable.
Why not just have the baby owl rub up?
Well, because that has more back to tradition also, because I was a dragon and...
Oh, I know, and the little hat turning ceremony in Irving is precious. I wouldn't want to do away with, it's just a question, just a question. But I think it's nice to have the students weigh in.
Right, I mean, yeah.
I love the first three for sure, I don't, I'm not too familiar with the high school mascot, but the first three are fantastic.
One thing we found out when we were looking at all the logos, because we did research the logos, we don't own the copyrights to the owls.
We knew that.
So, now we do. Since Saskia took care of this, we own the copyrights to all this. And that was a major thing when we were going through this.
I mean, we lost our owl because we got a cease and desist letter to stop using our owl.
And actually, and when we researched the Irving Dragon, we found the Irving Dragon out there also.
Wow.
But you know what? That wasn't even our owl anyway. Our owl's the owl that's on the scoreboard out there, that's, you know.
Yeah, our owl's just the fade.
Someone CND to high school? That's crazy.
Huh? Yeah.
I mean, what this is important, this also leads into the new website. So, the logos are very critical to the new website.
Okay.
And moving it forward.
So, let's, let's have a, let's.
The website is happening?
The website, well, we had the report at last meeting that we were moving forward with.
I wasn't sure that we hired anybody to do the website.
I believe it's on tonight's agenda.
Oh.
Well, it was on.
Is it on tonight's agenda?
We talked about it, but we didn't vote. Yeah, is that, is that a vote, a matter of vote?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I know you guys have been working on it for.
Just real quick, is it critical to have the of HP on the high school owl?
I mean, we take, I mean.
We have time to.
Play around.
Play around, all right.
Let's, let's digest it. Let's take Darcy's suggestion and digest it a little bit. We'll have comments, and try to figure out a game plan to include more people in the process as well, and.
I mean, would you like it, like us to take it to the students, have administration take it to the students also, or do you want?
What is the board's?
What do you guys want to do?
What is the board's view on that?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. Yeah, as long as it's not too onerous for the, I mean, I don't know what the best way to do it is, but.
It might be, it might be meaningful for the kids to have a say.
Yeah.
But I don't know that I, I anticipate issues if there's a vote, you know, with certain age groups, because they might, you know, get offended if they didn't, you know, you didn't vote for the one I liked. I don't know. I mean, I just imagine that different age groups might.
I think we should spend a lot of time on this.
No.
It's a great, you know, it's a great idea.
I just know that it's very meaningful for the kids.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll talk to the principals and see how they want. I mean, we took it to the art departments. So, the art teachers did see, and if they shared it with their students, I, I'm not sure, but. We'll talk to the principals, and we'll let them get it to the students.
Okay.
You know, once again, the goal here was, number one, to brand the district.
Yeah.
When, when we came onboard and we were looking at the mascots, they were all mascots that were being used from other places, and, and that's really not the process of branding a district, particularly where we're at a very fertile time, for more reasons than one here in Highland Park. And I don't mean to, because I know at Irving, we have a lot of, a lot of teachers that are expecting babies, but, so more ways than one, we're standing on fertile ground, and, and this is the optimal moment right now to really brand the district. I want to take a moment to actually also commend Saskia, because she is a volunteer, and she puts enormous, enormous amount of hours to make this thing work. You know, we're encouraged of what we're seeing, and, and ultimately, the vision here is to improve communications, and she has set up already external and internal communication processes that, that are starting to work. And so, we're reaping the rewards of having her as a volunteer. So, Saskia, thank you so much for, for your valuable work.
Adam, may I, may I add something? I just thought that the newsletter was fantastic. This last, very detailed newsletter is beautiful and interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so once again, thank you. And as you know, and we already know this, you know, Chris is an integral part of this, and without him, what can we do? So, there's this combination between Saskia and Chris. It's, we're reaping the rewards, so, so thank you, okay? So, I would like to share, so Linda and I, we've been working very diligently in preparing a comprehensive budget. Our intention is for a three-prong report. This is only the first. So, this is a very general report, but we want it to be as clear, as comprehensive as possible. And I believe the next one is scheduled for March 9th, is it? March 9th will be the second report, and that'll be even, even more comprehensive. So, we wanted to give you all of the information humanly possible, so you can understand where we're at, and where we're going, and what we need to do as a community to get there. So, here we go.
It's tomorrow, budget address. Governor, the governors.
I can't.
It's tomorrow.
Okay, here we go. Thank you, Linda. It's going to go right through. Yes? All right, so, when we look at major changes in terms of our revenues, what we take in, if we look at the 2% cap, at 2%, we're looking at $406,4,000 for property taxes. We can't give you a number right now for in terms of state aid, because we have not received state aid. We should be getting that very soon. Yes, Linda? By Friday, we should be, you know, having a good, strong idea of what our state aid is going to be. We're looking at the reduction of use of capital reserve, which is 224, and I'm going to go through each and every one of them, but through the use of waivers because of increased enrollments, and the health benefit increases exceeding that 4%, we're looking at the changes in terms of our revenues of $242,945. So, that's step one. Those are revenues. Going to the next one. Yes?
Israel, I'm sorry, could you or Linda explain, by the time we get to the end, it's going to be, can you just explain what reduction in use of capital reserve means?
Yes. In the current year, 2014-15, we budgeted to you to take out of capital reserve $674,000, which was purposed to fund the Bartle window replacement project. In the 2015-16 budget, we are proposing to withdraw $450,000 from the capital reserve fund to do some boiler replacements at the high school. So, the amount that we are taking to support the budget is reducing by 224. It's the 674 this year versus the 450 next year. So, that's, that's part of our total revenue number. But the other pieces, we don't know if any other pieces are, are going to increase. And the waivers is the option of the board.
I'm going to ask all board members to hold questions to the end. This is a long presentation, and if we, there are going to be a lot of questions, and just, if we interrupt Israel at every chance, it's, we're never going to get through it, and it's, and we'll lose the overall message within the budget. So, please, just, if we could hold questions to the end, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So, in other words, last year, we spent, let's say, $600,000, right, for the windows. We're targeting to spend over $400,000 for new boilers. Our boilers are very old. They're about to break down, all right? We cannot wait any longer. So, if, just clearly, if you look at the 600 that was spent last year, plus the 400 that we intend to spend, the difference between that is what? The 200,000. That is the capital reserve that we have. Yes?
The, when you look at the expenditure side, you'll see that capital outlay expenditures also are reducing by the 224,000. So, that is a one-for-one. Revenue and expenditures will both be going down by that same amount. Okay, if that helps?
Let's go to the next slide. So, now budget reductions. And by the way, we've been sharpening our pencils on this one. And I want to share with you what we've done thus far. We're looking at in terms of salaries, a total reduction of $309,566 in salary reduction. Where does that money come from? Well, we had an assistant superintendent, right, for curriculum. That's the salary. We had the data specialist, Ralph Hoag, Hoag, right? He left, all right? We saved some money for the retirements that we, we had this particular year, plus we reduced curriculum writing costs of $5,900, all right? So, instead of incurring that expense for additional curriculum writing, we saved it. And we might need it for curriculum writing for next year. All right, so, for consideration at this particular juncture, and this is a conversation that we continue to have, is, would it be, would it make a lot of sense to save additional monies in another assistant superintendent? Remember, before, you had two assistant superintendents, right? If we save money with one, the second one will cost $145,000. That's salary, plus, let's go to the next one. All right, plus the benefits. And if we look at employee benefits, the reductions has been $155,727, because employers now are contributing more premiums, all right? In addition to that, with our maintenance, heating and air conditioning, the contract, we had a conversation with our maintenance crew, and they said, you know what? We can save you an additional $20,000, because we'll, we'll fix whatever needs to be fixed in-house, therefore saving the district $20,000. Central office, we decided to cut also some areas in central office in the reduction of the phone costs, the copier costs, reduce costs of other benefits, meaning the FICA pensions. So, we reduced that by $31,000. In addition to that, we saved some money in our utilities, you know, based on the current efficiencies that we already have. As you know, the lighting system, we've saved a ton of money with the lighting system that we have. We saved about $21,000 in one particular year. We did, we have new windows, but we have no data to justify and to actually prove that we've been saving money on the windows, because they were just installed. But we do have the data, knowing that we have been saving money with our utilities, particularly in the areas of, of electric. All right, continuing with budget reductions, I sat, we both sat with Bill Shalala, the director of, interim director of special education, and, you know, we, we impressed the, told him the importance of reducing that. Now, now, mind you, all of the reductions that we're proposing will not affect kids. It's not taking away, you know, the, the resources away from the classrooms, all right? So, these are where areas that we looked into. So, we decreased the tuitions because of fewer kids, and that gave us $57,000. Decreased in-house costs, physical therapist that we reduced for $30,000. Nursing support, this was a nurse that was attending a kid that was bused. We no longer needed her. That gave, we gained an additional $89,000. A Wilson consultant that we reduced to $12,000. Life skill consultant was eliminated, no longer in need for that. $70,000, and the reduction of supply budgets, that supplies for special ed. We identify certain number of supplies that were no longer needed. So, therefore saving us an additional $12,339. So, the total amount of budget reductions targeted this particular year for these areas, a total of $850,167. Can we cut some more? Probably. I'm not in a position tonight to actually share with you more cuts. That's, we really need to sit down and think this carefully. Let's go to the next. So, we have, all right. Now, when we look at the cuts that we've had this year, now, we're going to compare that to the increases that we've had, the cost increases. We had to budget for a number of positions that we did not budget for. All right, so Irving, we, the GNT teacher, the art teacher, we had two teachers in second grade for Bartle. And as you can see, I don't want to go through the rest, but we're looking at about 12 positions, right, that were unaccounted for, 10 or 11 positions that were unaccounted for. And can we go to the next slide? All right, those positions, the total current year, unbudgeted positions, all right, came out to whopping $495,531, plus, plus the benefits that were unaccounted for, that we needed to budget this year. Salary increases. Next year, we're anticipating new positions. That's going to cost this district $209,000. I know at the beginning of the school year, we spoke a lot about ESL, all right? We want, we would like to provide more ESL services for our kids, right? That's going to cost us. High school increased teacher, English teacher to a full-time position. The high school is going to need an increased math teacher, also a full-time social worker, and two full-time speech therapists, all right? That used to be part-time, but because of the needs that have been identified at the high school, these are positions that we have to prepare for to fill in for next year. The reclassification to general operations budget to comply with the NCLB, No Child Left Behind requirements, is going to cost us $52,700. And the negotiated contracts, right, we're all happy that finally we negotiated contract with NJEA, but that cost the district an additional $371,431. In addition, health benefits, and by the way, those are just salaries. In benefits, we're looking at a payoff of $567,861 for this particular year alone. So, current benefits for unbudgeted new hires, which were 10, absorbed by six budget contingencies and savings from resigned and retired staff. So, if we look at five anticipated new positions at $108,000, right, plus contingency for two new positions that we have to set aside just in case, all right? So, we're looking at an additional $43,504, and then the anticipated premiums that we have to pay for those new positions. So, guys, the premiums are killing us. Really are. We're paying very high premiums. And so, we're looking at $415,597. Athletics, we had to replace some worn-out equipment at 10, and that's minimum, minimum, $10,550. Maintenance for the custodian, the landscaping, security costs, and the boiler replacement, I remember, we, we mentioned the boiler replacement, right, out of capital funds, reserve, $450, but that doesn't affect the actual budget. That affects the capital reserve, all right? So, I just want to make sure that you know that's set aside. $450 for the boiler replacements. Increased services contract for the year, right, which is $100,000, and that's just on, you know, wages. Increase cost of supplies, all right, so $50,000. Those are cleaning supplies, supplies that they need to run the entire district. Continue. All right, in addition to that, we're looking at this particular year, hiring a consultant for $40,000, and that's a minimum. That's if we were able to even find a consultant that would want to come to this district for $300 to $400 a day. All right, that's with the district, all right? The expansion of professional development, we cannot expect teachers to be great teachers and evolve and continue to improve their craft if we're not providing professional development. The amount of money that we're providing for professional development is, it's, it's a shame. So, we decided, you know what? We're going to increase it by $25,000, which will not be controlled thoroughly by the district. So, we're proposing, let's not control all the money. Let's control part of that money so we can provide professional development to spearhead the initiatives and the vision for the district while giving the rest of the money to each and every school, so they can use that money as best they want, as best they can, to meet the needs of their staff. All right, so that's an additional $25,000. The legal costs for special ed litigation, $15,000. We're spending a ton of money also on litigations. That's another area that's, that's costing this district. Insurance, once again, of $12,338, and the increased substitute coverage of $62,000. Now, you might be shocked, $62,000 for subs, but number one, we have quite a number of teachers that are going on maternity leave, and they need to be replaced, all right? Because, that's one, because all of the staff development was front-loaded this year, that left us with no professional development days for the year. So, during the entire year, we have no time to provide staff with professional development, because all of the professional development days were front-loaded at the beginning of the school year. So, the types of professional development that the staff were engaged in required substitute teachers. All right, so, costing the district $62,000. All right, Bartle, the expansion of the robotics program, $1,000. And if we can go through, and these are just, just, obviously smaller areas, but I think the most expensive one is the touchstone textbooks. We started a new initiative in grades three, six, and seven, touchstones. And for next year, if we're looking at expanding, that's going to cost, just in materials alone, the textbook's $14,000. You know, technology, expansion for robotics program in the middle school, and, and on and on. All right, for the high school, the Navian Scholarship Career Database, which is of fabulous software, the replacement of novels, literature, poetry, textbooks, replacement of textbooks, replacement of desks and chairs, and, and that's needed. I mean, right now, we were looking at and assessing the current need of the high school and the current conditions of a lot of the textbooks, and they're old, they're old. Continue. All right, so, in textbooks alone, new textbooks, $17,000 for the AP psychology, for learning Microsoft Office, for the accounting real world. And these are new courses that we're offering the children. As a matter of fact, Adam, you had mentioned that whenever you make new offers, right, courses, that requires staff development and requires books. All right, so, algebra, geometry textbooks, because of increased enrollments in the high school, $3,000. And musical instruments, I heard the tuba, bassoon, and a clarinet, they're in terrible shape, right? And we're looking at $11,000. All right, so now, this is your total, $2,106,429,000, and that excludes the boiler. Go to the next one. So, when we compare in terms of the increase of revenues of $242,000, that's how we started this presentation, and we're looking at our expenditures of $932,210, we have a budget shortfall for next year, folks, of $689,265,000. And this is with the over $800,000 that we cut this year. All right, so, so when we talk about tax increases, that's, and I know everyone, oh, no. If we look at, at 2%, right, the additional dollars at 2%, let's say, would be $464,000, yes? All right, that's the total. All right, so you're talking about a manual cost of $77,61, and your monthly, you know, that's, that's 2% cap. So, that's an additional $6.47, give or take, a month. That's not enough. It really isn't. I'm going to be honest with you. We're looking at at least 4.5% to 5% that minimum of increase in taxes, just to address the shortfall, as the chart, as the chart indicates. All right, so you're looking at 696,000, and that would take care of that shortfall. Okay, next. All right, so the current budget also, these are things to consider, you know, the current budget for the charter schools. Not only one, we have various charter schools, all right? You're looking at $562,000 in charter schools alone, all right? That's 2.42%. All right, that's a little over the cap that you have, just in charter schools alone. And you, and you, and you add to that formula how much we're paying for Hartifka, Hartifka?
Hartifka.
Hartifka, all right? And we look at, if they expand within five years, you could be paying off a million dollars. Scary. Continue. Technology speaks for itself. I think before, there was like a budget of $35,000 a couple of years ago. That was increased because we, we, we are in need of a significant upgrade in our technology and infrastructure here in this district. And it's going to require for, for us just to catch up, $150,000, and that's just not this year, for the next few years. And by the time that we finish purchasing, you know, updating all of the hardware and updating the infrastructure, by the time we finish, we're ready to do it all over again. So, we're looking at approximately $150,000 a year from this point on. And am I, Linda, am I accurate? And am I, Linda, am I accurate? All right. Searching for better efficiencies. Okay, so now, we've been talking. So we need to find better efficiencies for this district. Assistant superintendent, and this is just for consideration, will cost us $145,000 and an estimated $20,000 in benefits. We're looking at doing a better job with scheduling. Now, I know this is a, this is a very tricky issue regarding the sixth period. But the bottom line, that sixth period that we're paying teachers in middle school and in high school is costing this district $375,000 for our sixth period. So the question is, can we do a better job with scheduling? Is it necessary, if we can look at scheduling and get the principals together and get great minds together and see how we can do a better job with scheduling and be more creative, can we save some money with that sixth period? Realistically, maybe not. Because when you're into a sixth period, either, either, either you're not doing a great job with scheduling or you can do a better job with scheduling, but you need more people, you need more staff members. So we might not be able to eliminate the $375,000. But if we can cut that in half, while we're making progress, all right? Teacher classroom composition. So I went to some of the schools and I had some questions about the composition of classrooms. When you look at certain number of kids, there were minimum, I says, can we, can we join two classes together? Because you only had a few. All right, so we're looking at that, all right? We're looking at, and by the way, let me make this very clear. We're not saying that we are eliminating kindergarten Paris. It's not what we're saying. I don't want to undergo the guillotine tomorrow morning, all right? My role as your interim superintendent is to let you know that if you're interested in keeping six Paris for kindergarten, it is costing the district $135,000 plus $104,373 benefits for six Paris. So that's something that should be on your mind. We talked about the most effective use of existing staff pool of paraprofessionals and teacher assistants. That's $1,132,000, $130,000, plus the $858,000 for their benefits. So we've been having conversations, is it necessary or can we outsource future? All right? Now, are we going to do it? We're not saying that, we're saying that we should consider it. Is that an option that we have? It might not be. All right, next. So, so today, this is the preliminary budget discussion. The next one is going to be tentatively scheduled for March 9th. For board approval, this is where we're going to submit to the county our budget. So we have a lot to think about, folks, because the time is pressing. We've got a lot of wonderful initiatives that we would like to put in place. But we're undergoing a shortfall now and we need as many bright minds as possible to see how we can address the shortfalls and give our kids everything that they rightfully deserve. Okay, we're done? Thank you.
Chris, do you want to reset the mics? Perfect, thank you. I think, yes, me too. For Israel, I want to thank you, and Linda, very much want to thank you for that report. That was, I'm sorry, Greg Dietz is in here, that was probably one of the best budget reports we've had in a very long time and the most detailed, especially at this stage. So I think it's going to set us up for a lot of good conversations and a lot of hard decisions that this board's going to have to make. I'd like to open this portion up to board questions on the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a few. So, Israel, because, because we ended up having to pay substitutes for professional development this year, have we changed the configuration of professional development next year so that it's spread out over the course of the year?
That is correct. So we changed the configuration for professional development. What we've decided to do for next year is we're front-loading two days, all right, prior to the students' arrival. And then we schedule for four half-day professional development days throughout the entire year.
It was my understanding, by the way, that we were too small a district to use Naviance. That it actually opened up issues of, of, you know, privacy because, because people would be able to actually tell who was who on Naviance.
I can look into that.
Because I know it's something we've broached before, and I know a lot of districts use it and like it, but I thought that we were sort of under the, under what would be critical mass.
I'm sorry, what is it?
It's a college prep and application software system. So it sort of keep, the kids use it as they're applying to colleges. It keeps track of applications. It sort of does a lot of the work of guidance, a lot of the grunt work of guidance. It sort of takes care of all that. And a lot of districts use it, but I, it was my understanding that because of our size, we were not necessarily good candidates. So maybe that's changed. Yeah, because you can actually, you know, there are few enough students, fewer, few enough students so that you could look at somebody's profile and figure out who it is based on some parameters, like there's only, you know, five kids in AP Physics and, you know, and like that.
Surely there are confidentiality settings on it, we should find out about that. I mean, maybe we can disable looking at other students' profiles or something.
Anyway.
As a possibility.
AP Psych is not a new class. We offer AP Psych now, it was my. Oh, okay. So the social worker, going from half-time to full-time, can you?
Two.
Can you explain what the, what the need is?
More students. We have an increase of students in the high school.
Microphone.
I'm sorry. We have an increase of students in the high school. You know, we identify, you know, more students in need of counseling and which would require two.
And so this year, what was the difference between what the state required for us to budget for charters and what we ended up spending?
Linda, would you help out with that?
It was about $100,000.
Yeah. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was, it was just a hair. It's in our last resolution.
When does that money end up getting released?
Well, what happens is, we're required to budget for it.
Right, so we can't, those funds are in.
We get the numbers in December as far as actual enrollments based upon October 15th. And at that, at that point, we say, well, so we may not spend this, so we probably could reallocate it. However, we get another report at the end of June. And they look at the rest of the year's enrollment. So we could get a bill, and we have gotten a bill right at the end of June. Could be $20,000, $30,000. So we can't take all of it out. So we have to think conservatively and leave something in there, but we are free, so to speak, to use that money elsewhere. So, within a certain, you know, cap, so to speak.
And so the one other question is, with regard to the sixth period and scheduling, is there, I mean, have we considered? I know that the rotating schedule makes the six, is sort of getting rid of six-period payments challenging. Are there other schedules that we might consider that would alleviate that?
Yes, we are, in fact, I met with both the middle school principal and the high school principal. We're going to continue that dialogue because that needs to happen fairly quickly. Someone even had suggested an eight-period day.
I hate the eight.
You know, I know you do, but it's certainly, it's certainly a model that a lot of schools use with success. And, you know, $350,000 is a lot of money.
It's a lot of money and a lot of taxes. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, the social worker, that Anne brought up the social worker issue. I wanted to know if there was any sort of comparison between what we lost with the SAC counselor and what two social workers would be. I understand that's two separate people, obviously. But a SAC counselor does renew some other capabilities, I guess, that we don't currently have.
You know what I'm going to do in terms of the two SAC counselors? For the next board meeting, I'll give you all of the finite details regarding them.
Great, thank you. And I did want to ask also about the absence of a reading specialist for the Bartle School. I don't believe that we have one on staff. And from what I understand, there are situations where children are graduating onto the middle school and not reading at a middle school level, far below, in fact. So I know that there are some parent organizations that are interested in dealing with this on a volunteer level. But I don't know if that's happening. I just have heard, you know, in the neighborhood. But I don't know if that's happening, I don't know what that's worth. I don't know that that can really compare with a reading specialist to diagnose different issues like dyslexia, for instance. But these things might go unnoticed until middle school, it looks like to me.
This is for Bartle, yes?
For Bartle, yeah.
Are there other questions?
Yep, there's a couple of items on, there aren't pages on the presentation, so it makes me have to go back. But under the cost increases for the service contract, $100,000, it looks like just in the contract itself, and then the additional $50,000 for supplies, is that?
When we projected the increase in the contract for custodial maintenance and landscaping services, we budgeted an 18% increase, knowing that when we went out for new proposals, that there was going to be an increase due to the contract agreement between Temco and the SEIU. When we got the proposals from the companies that submitted them, it was actually about $70,000 higher than that.
Higher than an 18% increase, year over year.
And the contract was not permitted to include custodial supplies, which formerly had been part of the contract because of public New Jersey purchasing laws. When you go out for an RFP, you're not allowed to include supplies. Whereas when you offer bid, you can. So it would have been that much higher if it had been a bid. So, yeah, this is.
We've been dealing with this for a while.
We knew this was coming.
Yeah.
And we were able to get a delay for a year due to the good graces of Temco, I'll say. They were able to get an agreement with the SEIU to postpone the contract increases for one year. But it was inevitable.
We'll be going out to bid, or are we not, did we, did we not hire the consultant to review the RFP?
It's a two-year contract, I'm not sure.
I thought we were doing some sort of competitive bidding in terms of.
We did competitive contracting.
Competitive contracting. And we've, we're not, we're done?
That's what we did a year ago.
All right. Are there other questions?
I had a sort of a procedural question. I know we talked about doing some town hall type of stuff to let people really have at it with the budget, let the public really say their piece, and give us suggestions to, you know, not for nothing, about cuts that could be made. Do we want to, is that something we would talk about now?
We can talk about it now.
Sort of a scheduling issue.
The show kind of goes on the road once we complete the tentative budget. Israel and I will go to PTO meetings. We, we will advertise the next, the final budget presentation as the final budget presentation for Common. It's a public hearing specifically on the budget. Beyond that, that's about what we normally do is the PTO meetings and the special budget meeting.
Maya, if I'm correct about the final budget public hearing, that's like one day before the budget has to be submitted, right, to the state?
No, no, it's actually due, I think, we have the May 4th meeting as a fallback for the approval of the final budget. The hearing itself has to take place within that week's time. The adoption of the final budget, we have a little more time if we needed it.
I see, so if the members of the public had a concern, it could be dealt with.
Right, so we're going to advertise, as we just did through the presentation, pretty much from now until May will be budget conversations at the board table.
Okay.
There will be a presentation at every board meeting from Israel on our status, from our conversations, and from, as we get state aid number updates. The next board meeting on March 9th will be the preliminary budget, which the board will have to have some conversations tonight and some conversations at the next board meeting. Invite the public as well. But at that meeting, we will present a preliminary budget to the executive county superintendent. He'll have a chance to review that. And if he has a chance to redline anything that we put in there that he does not approve, but we also have opportunity to change from there all the way until May 4th, I believe.
And can we maybe, Michelle is the liaison to the Public Information Committee. Maybe this is something we want to reach out to them about, about ways to reach the broader community, not just our school community, because I think that's one issue that we ran into last year where a large segment of the community felt left out of the process. And while we may have been talking about it at the board table each time, there's a large swath of the community that's not going to, not going to reach that. So maybe this is a good time to reach out to the Public Information Committee and find a way to reach out to the broader community.
That's, yeah.
We have a meeting on Wednesday this week.
Wonderful.
So.
Feel free to talk about it, email myself and Israel or the board from that.
I did have one last question.
Hold on, let me, we just, the public meetings are advertised, I just wanted to say. The public is invited to all of these meetings. And I think these are the opportunity, this is the opportunity for people to weigh in who are not part of the school community, is at a school board meeting in front of all nine of us. Beyond that, it's great to invite people to meetings and go out, take the show on the road, as I said. But our, our next meetings, and I just want to reiterate it, are going to be about the budget. This is the opportunity for the general public to weigh in and the appropriate place to do it as well.
Okay. Am I looking at this correctly, that this doesn't include any state numbers? So anything that comes out to us is in addition to this, or am I looking at that wrong?
We haven't included any increase or decrease in state numbers.
So you've just left it flat from last year? Okay, so if we were to get any increase in state aid, when the governor has his budget addressed tomorrow, then that would be on top of.
Our shortfall would decrease.
Okay. So Linda, have you heard? So this is a two, double-edged sword. If we get a decrease in state funding, this is going to increase our. And then, and then I would just submit that this may be the time where, as a board, we want to engage in a little bit of advocacy in terms of state funding. And really take a look at, over the last few years, our state funding level and, you know, where we could be, had our numbers from the state not be decreasing each year.
Have we heard anything? Have you heard?
The numbers won't be coming out until late Thursday.
Right, but you haven't heard any whispers?
No, in fact, I, when we had our Q-SAC review today, I had a conversation with the executive county administrator. He said that at the county level, they have not heard anything about state aid. They have heard concerns about lack of state funding, lack of state revenues, and.
And a pension system and a transportation system.
The fact that they have underfunded the pension system and should they attempt to more appropriately fund it, that would certainly impact on other aspects of the state's budget. So that's all that we, we don't know anything really.
There's the court hearing for the pension system that is in limbo right now, that I think is waiting to see what happens tomorrow in terms of how much money he puts into it to determine.
The governor gives his budget address tomorrow. So that'll give us some indication, he may make announcements during that meeting, but that, that. Address, address, thank you, you're welcome.
Nobody hold their breath.
But definitive numbers won't be distributed until late Thursday.
Can you let us know as soon as you get those?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry, go.
Yeah, in terms of revenue, where you say the increase of waivers, those are the increases above?
Yes, waivers are the exceptions to the 2% property cap. They allow districts to raise more property taxes if they have certain things, like enrollment increases, which we have, and health benefit increases that exceed 4%, which everybody has.
All right, but then when we talked about the cost of benefits on the other slide.
Rob, we need to get closer to the mic.
When we talked about the benefits on the other slides, it was excluding the health benefits?
No, that was health benefits.
Hey, health benefits.
Yes.
Linda, what is our max allowable tax increase with waivers?
If, if we took all the waivers that we could possibly take?
I think.
One second.
I think so too, I just want to know.
That's what it said, 5%?
But we have to qualify for them, right?
No, we have, I'll tell you what we are qualified for.
We have them backed.
I thought we.
No, we did not use everything last year.
If we took all the waivers, we could increase the budget by seven, the taxes by 7.8%.
With just.
For free.
For free.
Well, no, that's what we would be allowed to go up to if we use the waivers the state already has told us that we are eligible for.
Okay.
And then on the slide with the, you said that we have less kids going out of districts, so there's a savings there, and more kids in district, but there's ways to save on the in-district special needs kids? It wasn't special needs, it was?
I'm not sure.
Out-of-district placements?
Yeah, thank you, out-of-district placements.
Are you talking about the slide you just passed?
Those are actually cost savings that have already been realized, the ones that you were looking at.
Yeah, those are, we looked at the projections for the students that we know we're going to be sending out next year. And because there are a lot of that graduated. be sending out next year, and because there are a lot of that graduated or aged out, or possibly moved out of district, we have fewer students going. And even though the tuition rates do increase, the net effect was a negative this year, which is very rare.
Okay.
We're hoping that we haven't forgotten somebody.
Are there any other questions?
A quick one about the technology budget, the $150,000 technology priorities slide. That's already included in the calculation of revenues? Okay. I wish to check if that was something we wanted to do on top of.
No, we're just explaining to you the priorities in the area of that technology budget, and how we have a lot of infrastructure needs that are, you know, dire, dire needs. So there is a significant amount of that technology budget that's addressing those needs.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know overall where the district is going with these technology purchases? Like, is it, what's the desire here? Are we just replacing what's broken, or do we have a long-term goal?
So the long-term goal right now, I had a conversation with Brian, and the long-term goal is to replace these old computers that we have. But, you know, more than just replacing, you know, we look, we need to look at the hardware that we're purchasing and connect them with instructional programs, so the kids can best use them. And so the conversation that we've been having is the Chromebooks, professional development, instructional programs within the Chromebooks.
So we're tying, so I guess the question, and I agree with the question, actually. So we are, when we are purchasing, we are tying our purchases to instructional needs and instructional programs that we're anticipating to expand?
That is correct.
Okay.
One small thing, I think it was worth $14,000, but...
That's not small.
Yeah, well, comparatively.
Yeah.
Was textbook replacement? No, not touchstones, that was even more, right? Oh, no, touchstones was 14,000. The question I had was about replacement textbooks, not for damaged textbooks, but it was 4,800. So I'm under the impression that there's a policy that if students lose a textbook or damage a textbook, that they are not required to replace it out of pocket.
They can graduate, they can graduate without paying back or returning their textbook, is my understanding.
That's how it was when I went to school.
That's how it was when I went to school.
Right.
So it only applies to seniors?
No, with, well, I don't know. No, I believe that the replacement textbooks would be worn-out textbooks mostly.
Okay.
Worn-out or damaged, but not necessarily in student...
Right.
Regardless, I think that that's, I mean, so do you think we have a policy that says nobody, and it's not needs-based, the policy?
Not needs-based, no. It's that, I was unclear as to what this was, but this was something that was brought to my attention, was that there is no need, apparently, to replace a textbook at the end of the year, regardless of graduation. But, you know, as I remember, you had to put your name in the textbook, you had to hand it back in the same...
There's a number.
Quality that it was given to you, in the same condition. There's a number that's assigned to you. So I was under the impression that that was still applicable in public schools in general.
Can you guys look into that, please?
I think that's still being done.
I would hope so.
We have a high school student.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, that's the same way we do it. I mean, I don't, like, if you don't return a library book, like, they don't give you your graduation thing. So I think it applies to textbooks as well.
I would assume so, but I don't know why.
I think it's, I think it goes down to a matter, a matter of enforcement more than policy, so I believe that it is the policy. I mean, I, I will have them look into it and get back to us.
If I may comment?
Yeah.
I'm the one who collects the money.
Yeah.
I get money for replacement, for lost textbooks and lost library books. We do, they do collect the money.
Okay.
Whether everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, I don't know, but I do know that we do collect money at the end of the year for that.
It could be an enforcement.
But after a while, textbooks, you know, are too ragged to use. I mean, they need to be replaced.
I'm looking at the amount of money that we're spending on textbooks, and I'm thinking every single one of those textbooks is expensive. So that if we're not, you know, tying up loose ends and making sure that those things are returned or in good shape, that might be something. But, you know, my other concern was the cost of the touchstones program. I don't remember that being a part of the presentation originally. I don't recall that there was any...
More presentation?
Number, the presentation on touchstones when we...
That's because this year, the Ed Foundation has, has, has agreed to provide money for it, so...
So if we're not happy with the program, or if we're not happy with the bill?
If we're not happy with the program and it's not working, then we won't pursue the program for next year.
Okay.
And so the input that the teachers are going to provide us at the end of the year is going to be invaluable.
Yes.
Right now, we started at third, sixth, and seventh grade. We would like to expand that. We'll see.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well...
All right, I have, no, I have a few questions. I want to talk about Read 180. Read 180 was a program we purchased probably about 10 years ago. We're looking to buy new, buy new textbooks and other material for it. I want to make sure that that is the best program for the time that we're at right now, and it's not something that we might want to replace the whole program, because there could be, I would assume that since we bought this program, there could be new programs out there that may be better for this particular subset of students. So I just want to ask you to look into that, to see if this is the best spot to spend our money. What else do I have? Life skills, the consultants. Can you talk about the life skills consultants and the other consultants in there, what their main purpose are and what they're going to be focusing on?
Well, the life skills consultant was, I think, a startup cost. It was a one-year consultant, just to get the program started. So that's why it's going away.
Okay.
Are you talking about the other consultants on that same one?
The Wilson, yeah, and the Wilson, the reductions.
I believe the Wilson consultant was for specific students to give them specialized training. These would be students with IEPs that require Wilson training or Wilson services. The physical therapist, I believe they simply reduced the estimated number of hours they would need for the physical therapist consultant to meet with certain students. And Israel touched on the nurse. We have, I believe, one or two students, it might just be one, that was taking a bus to a school for the handicapped, and the nurse needed to be on the bus, and apparently now, the nurse does not need to be on the bus. They still need a nurse at the school, but they've reduced the number of hours or the estimated cost of that nurse to be at the school.
Okay. Israel, I was wondering if you could go into more detail on the effective use of existing staff pool, paraprofessionals, teaching assistance of a million dollars?
Well, right now, I had this conversation with Moshe Shalala, and I was looking at the number of paraprofessionals that we have in this district, and I find it to be a little bit excessive. We might need them, and so we're looking into, to match every single paraprofessional in this district with a student or with a class. So we're putting them all into one pool, and we're matching them to make sure that if we have 50 to 55 paraprofessionals, that we need every single one. Because if we don't, well, then we have some money that we can save there. That's one piece. The second piece is that we're noticing some, particularly with the, with the team teaching, the collaborative team teaching classes, can we consolidate some of those? And so we're looking at that, therefore saving the district probably $80,000 more. That's one less teaching position.
What do you mean by consolidating them? Because that's generally one per grade level, so how would you solidify that?
Because we're noticing in, I believe it was at Irving, there was one particular class that only had like four special need kids. And so the question is, if there's only four here and four in the other class, why can't we just convert, put eight, which legally can be done? And so we're looking into that. What are the legalities?
Meaning there were two collaborative classes in one grade level?
Exactly. And so I question that, and Mr. Shalala, he's looking into that to see, can we do a better job, and how do we redistribute children in a way that it's legally, that will save us money? And so we're looking into that.
I just want to add my two cents.
It might not be possible, but we're looking into it. We just want to make sure that all of the classes are being configured the right way with the correct number of kids, with the correct number of teachers.
My daughter didn't have a collaborative class, but my two cents, we lived through the paraprofessional-less kindergarten experience, and it was kind of chaotic. I don't...
In kindergarten?
In kindergarten. I think kindergarten, it was about 21 children in the classroom, and the one teacher was maternity leave replacement, which happens often in Irving, for some reason. So they're young, they're, you know, they're having families. But this year was difficult, and I was finding myself in the classroom volunteering almost every day, just to make sure that there were another pair of hands. I don't know if that's possible, to have volunteers take the place of paraprofessionals, but, you know, in a collaborative classroom, I would imagine that it'd be a totally different thing.
Well, we have also, particularly in collaborative classrooms, there are legalities. I mean, we are mandated to have a paraprofessional in that classroom. Now, in addition to the paraprofessional, if we want to have volunteers, well, that would be an extra bonus, but I think legally, we're required to have a paraprofessional. Two teachers, one special education teacher, one regular education teacher, and a paraprofessional.
Right.
Jerry?
Adam, oh, sorry. Do, I thought that we had paras in every kindergarten class.
We do now.
We do.
But you stopped it for a while, right, and then we would...
I think it was three years ago?
Yeah. And do we know how many paras we have in total?
We have a total of six paras in kindergarten.
I mean, total, in the whole district? We don't know, just one?
Wow, we have like 50...
50 powers?
50, 55, something like that.
51, was it?
What's that? 50.3.
50, okay.
That always cracks me up.
0.3. I know, I know.
0.3.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Jerry, are you done?
I'm done.
Oh, and by the way, we're not suggesting that we're going to relieve paras. What we're saying is, you know, we're gonna look at the number of paras that we have, are they in the right positions, the right classrooms, and do we have some that are unaccounted for? Or we have too many? That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
If I could ask a quick question about the collaborative classrooms, particularly at Bartle and Irving. Mr. Shalala very kindly came to our recent CPAC meeting and spoke about that with parents. And I know he expressed a feeling that oftentimes, team teaching is not effective. He didn't go into details about why he thought that. I assume it's one, sort of, one branch of educational philosophy feels that it's not effective. And I'd just like to comment that before we make any decisions about that, I hope the board will sort of hear about it and have a chance to discuss it. I mean, there are parents at this meeting who are sort of, who are taken aback, realizing that there had been some team-taught collaborative classes that perhaps had not gone as smoothly as they could have, but that the thought was that perhaps the concept of team teaching was a good one. So I just hope, I hope that we'll have a good chance to discuss that if any structural changes are made.
We won't rush into judgment, we won't rush into decisions. This is a preliminary conversation. These are things that I'm looking at, and I'm asking questions.
Okay.
I, you know, I'm one that, my experience, when I was a principal, I converted most of my regular ed, you know, my special needs, 12 to 1 to 1, to collaborative teaching. So we went school-wide collaborative, because it was working. The only way it's gonna work, it's gotta be a good match.
Right.
You know, when you have two teachers, it's gotta be that perfect match. We were very fortunate that we were able to, you know, find teachers that wanted to work together, that worked together very nicely. So it worked for our school. If it's not working, we're gonna have to look at a different model. But that's a continued conversation that we'll be having with, not only Bill, but with parents also.
Okay, that's great. I mean, I hope that the model won't be thrown out because of collaboration issues with particular teachers. I mean, I know, for example, there's some situations that people are not happy about, you know, whatever, some people probably are, some aren't, but I hope that the model will still, will not be thrown out lightly.
No, we, I haven't said that.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. I just wanted to signal my concern.
Can I just do one quick follow-up on that? Because Israel had said something about, you know, taking a look at all of the staffing and how classrooms are best configured, and do we have, or do you personally have a philosophy in terms of what's a good class size, what class size you wouldn't go over, what class size you don't want to go under? I mean, because I think if you're looking at staffing, that's kind of one of your most important, you know, one of the most important things you're looking at as to how many kids you would put in a classroom.
Well, my philosophy, you might not be able to afford.
I don't think we can afford all of our philosophies.
Quite frankly, I do believe in reduced class sizes for early childhood. I don't, I don't think there should be more than 20 students from K1 and 2.
Yep.
That's my own personal, that's, as a principal for 13 years, I didn't have one child over 20. That was a philosophy.
And then what about in...
You know, from third through fifth grade would be like 25, sixth, seventh, and eighth, no more than 30. Yeah, because in, particularly in junior high school, the numbers just grow out of control.
You know, because this is, you know, particularly with the kindergarten paras and with these kinds of issues, this is where we run straight up to the charter school debate, because we have one charter school, which is offering two teachers in every classroom.
Wow.
And we have another charter school, you know, which if we don't have paras in kindergarten, they've got paras over there.
Of course.
So, you know, if, there are certain offerings that we can't really tinker with terribly much, because there's another free alternative in another town that someone can go to, and then we just, we save the money here and we lose it on the other end.
And then you lose it on the other end.
Exactly. So, you know, we can't save money and cost ourselves money at the same time.
I agree.
But we also have to acknowledge with the reason, some of the reasons that some of our students leave are not always directly correlated to that one example. There are multiple reasons, and sometimes we have to make a decision in terms of what the overall district is best prepared to do. So after this presentation, Israel and Linda will take our comments and prepare a draft budget. Is there anything that, in particular, that should not be included that we spoke about tonight? Is there anything that anybody is thinking about that should be included in an overall budget? We need to give them some guidance. They will prepare us and we'll have another comment, a chance to comment on it, but just if anybody has any further comments, now is the time, or hold your peace for a week or two.
I mean, I have certain global concerns about staffing and stuff like that. I don't know if now is the time for me to go into my whole philosophy. I mean, I fear that perhaps we need additional guidance staff at Bartle, social worker staff, something of that nature, because of the nature of the disciplinary situations that have been going on. I am concerned about the transition from Bartle to middle school and the reading issues that some students have experienced. So, you know, there are some sort of global concerns I have.
This more than appropriate time?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, like, I can say, I think we should budget $50,000 more, you know, but that is a concern that I have, and I don't know how other board members feel.
But then Israel and Linda should take that into consideration and look into that, look into those concerns, so we're not adding it at the final budget.
Ah, yeah.
If we add it next time, and have the conversation next time, it will be, prepare everybody for the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we're looking at Read 180. I would certainly also like, consider, say that we should consider looking at Study Island. I think that is a reviled program throughout the district. I've personally looked at it myself. I find it to be tremendously low-quality.
Okay.
And I'd like to know exactly what we're spending on it and what we're using it for, and if it's something we want to continue.
Okay.
I think if you ask the kids, they would probably agree.
Okay. Absolutely. I definitely, I think we should take the conversation on six periods to the next level. I think you should be having that with the principals and so forth, and Kim, and the, and the teachers as well.
Right. Because I would actually like to know, if we go to a straight eight, do we get rid of, do we get rid of a big chunk of that 335?
Seventy-five.
I believe so, and this is a conversation we've been having, I'm going to continue this conversation this week with the principals, but, you know, when we're looking at the sixth period, if we can eliminate the sixth period altogether, we will, but please remember that we have to abide by, you know, the contract.
Right.
And we really do. And we cannot eliminate the sixth period and overload the teachers anyway. So, and that's a conversation that I'll be having with Kim, with the teachers, and with the principals. So, while, you know, I see myself, well, part of my responsibility is to make sure that we're fiscally sound, but my responsibility is also to ensure that we're being fair to the teachers and the kids are getting what they really need.
Well, I mean, if we go, you know, I'm not suggesting that we, that we somehow, you know, are in violation of the contract. I mean, if we go to a straight eight and, and teachers are teaching the five periods a day, you know, would that eliminate the 375? I guess that's the question.
That's, that's, that's...
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I think, so, but I definitely want, I would, I definitely think that needs to be pursued from both angles, the legal side and the communication side as well. Furthermore, an assistant superintendent, I think we need to start looking at possibilities for staff. It may not be that exact title or that position, but to find curriculum staff to go into this district in some, in some capacity.
I also had another question.
In addition to the $40,000 that was allocated within the budget here?
Yeah, a position to oversee all of, all of the curriculum and instruction. I don't know of one superintendent, we have not had one superintendent do all of that ever, besides, besides this year, and I think we need to evaluate how much work is on your plate in versus how much is getting done and how much could be done.
And I don't think a superintendent is going to be able to do that kind of work. What we're, what we're suggesting is the possibility, and this is like a possibility, something to consider. If you eliminate the position of assistant superintendent, you have to then get a curriculum supervisor. And that's just, but if, if, if we're able to find a good curriculum supervisor or director, all right, that will save this district at least $50,000.
Right.
All right? Let's say at $80,000, $90,000 for a curriculum supervisor, you know, as opposed to $145,000, $150,000 for assistant superintendent, so that's something.
And would that be like a part-time teacher?
I think that will be the route, I think that will be the route that we end up, end up going. It just, we need to, we need to figure out what, how we're going to fill that role and what that role is going to be.
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry, would that be a part-time teacher, part-time supervisor, or just a straight supervisory position?
This is a straight supervisor full-time, absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, you can't handle all the observations by yourself even. You need somebody, you need...
It's been a struggle this year.
Yeah, I know.
So, in the spirit of consolidating and consulting, it might be something that we want to talk about when we talk about gifted and talented teachers that are, you know, just here for gifted and talented students. If we can talk about how many students they are responsible for, you know, and figure that out, that might help the conversation along, because I think that those teachers are valuable in terms of enrichment for all the students. And that might help with reading, that might help with math, that might help with other things. If we use that gifted and talented teacher as a consultant for all of the teachers in Bartle and Irving especially, so that, you know, we could revisit that plan. It's not necessarily, you know, a bad thing, what we have now, but it might be something that we need to consolidate as well, and that might be something, we can spread that money around to different classrooms, you know.
Okay. Yeah. We just have to see if the fit and all that.
I mean, it'd be great if she could do some, if the GNT position could also be used for some reading specialist stuff.
Nice catch. Yeah, agreed, and it's something that we need to look into. Okay? Are there any other questions on the budget presentation?
I just had one. I just want to say, I'm just echoing, Adam, how much this presentation is appreciated.
Yes.
It can't be undersaid, honestly, because we've never seen anything like this before. It's very thorough, it obviously leads to a fuller discussion, and really, Israel and Linda, you've done a great job. I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Very much. I do want to echo one, one area caution, as I've said, that this is going to be a conversation we are having throughout the next two months. The board is considering a tax increase above the regulated 2%. I want that to be abundantly clear and, and everybody aware, so when we are considering, when we are having this conversation, I'm not going to say what the board will do, but what is, the presentation presented to us today does articulate the option of going above the regulated 2% cap. So, I don't want anybody to be surprised if we do do that at the end. But we will do it with a clear area of needs and hopefully provide great services to the students.
Adam, if I could follow up on that, and Darcy's point about maybe showing some activism with regard to state funding, then I wonder if we could involve the community in some way, in some sort of activism?
I mean...
It'd be great to sort of have community members energized about how we are trying to make this work, and it is just impossible. It is just impossible.
I mean, we can do what we can from here and explain the situation we are in, but the primary goal that I'm going to take on in the next two months with Linda and all of us together is to kind of articulate the budget that we have and to work with, within the constraints that we are in, while every time, take a chance to slap the governor and the, the state for their lack of funding at that, at that point. But at that, at this point, that, that's where my efforts are going to go.
That sounds appropriate. I hope the community will join us.
And I would be, I would more than welcome the community to join us to, to do that, but at this point, I think we have articulated many a times that we are not even at our 2009, I believe, state funding levels.
Hi.
We're $5 million short.
Something like, yeah.
Over that.
And the funding, the formula that is, is not funded properly, and we've spoke about that many times on this table, but I think what we need to do is live in the constraints that we are in.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And put our efforts to find, to put, to put the most cost-efficient and respectful budget for the taxpayers together that provides the most to the students.
Absolutely. I am, as someone who was new to the budget process last year, I at first did not realize, despite having come to a number of board meetings, how constrained we were by state funding. I didn't realize that we were not funded up to the formula, you know, till...
Yeah.
A number of months ago. So, I, I mean, I know you'll make that clear to people who come to board meetings, anything we can do to sort of make sure that the community as a whole is aware of that, that might help us, sort of, in terms of...
Linda, can you pull the 10-year state aid numbers that I can, so I can speak about them at the next board meeting?
Oh, that's great.
I think that's a good indicator of where we are in trend.
That would have made me feel better about the tax, if I had, sort of, known more about it.
So, can you pull the, actually, the tax increases, so you know the spreadsheet that you normally pull for us, the 10-year, it's from the audit report, actually? I think it's J3, but, that goes on the tax increases, the overall budget, and the state aid numbers as well.
I mean, it's just shocking.
Yeah, I'll pull it, I'll show it.
Yeah, it's very eye-opening.
I have, I have the audit report next to my bed right now. I'll, I'll look at it when I get home.
And if I can bring that up at the meeting on Wednesday, when I meet with the Communication Committee, or, you know...
Absolutely. Yeah.
Got to throw one more in?
Absolutely.
It'll be two-part. One, the boiler replacement, that is considered to be a critical replacement at this time?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then the...
We've been repairing that, and...
Can we get a board tour of the boiler?
There was, last year, we were down to one boiler, and we were praying that that one didn't break, because it took us so long to get this one repaired. So, it's, I think, yes, it's very expensive. But, yeah, they've gotten to the point where they're...
Diminishing returns.
Yeah, well, and they're very, they're energy hogs, too. So, in, you know, once it's done, we will see an improvement in our utility costs. One upside.
You got a second part?
No, no, no.
All right. The other part is utilities are going to, we're not probably going to see savings in our utilities for this, this year, our heating.
No, we have a decrease of $21,000. We're, we're hoping for a further decrease in the heating costs.
Even with the cold, extra cold winter?
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Actually, the, the natural gas prices have dropped.
That's good, then, okay.
And last winter was cold, and I used last year's experience to move forward, to project this year and next year.
Good, so maybe we will. Perfect. Is there any other conversations on the budget presentation? Israel, do you have anything else on the superintendent's report?
No.
Okay. Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola, can we have the curriculum and instruction report?
Yes. The curriculum committee met tonight, and the read-in, should I do that first? Okay, I'll just get that out of the way. There was a revision necessary for an NJIT trip. The chaperone needed to be replaced, since Ms. Mahirana is no longer in the district. So, there was also a change to the competition date. It's now February 11th, and now we have Michael Moore replacing Ms. Mahirana as the chaperone. The curriculum committee had a few updates. There were some revisions. Minor changes were made to the social study standards that were adopted on July 9th. New skills were added to the skills table. Highland Park curriculum documents will be reviewed and revised as necessary. Comprehensive health and physical education, minor changes were made that included the following terms in the glossary overload principle, progressive principle, principle of specificity, health, wellness, rhythm, and health data. Newly passed legislation describing dating violence, education grades 7 to 12 was added to the legislation. That's NJSA 18A 35-4.23A. Highland Park curriculum documents will be reviewed and revised as necessary. In technology, a new strand of computational thinking and programming was added to 8.2, also 8.1. Educational technology must include instruction on social media for middle school students. Highland Park curriculum documents will be reviewed and revised as necessary. Science, the next-generation science standards, which are New Jersey state curriculum standards, have been adopted. New curriculum must be written for grades 6 to 12 and implemented by September 2016. Curriculum will also be needed to be written for grades K to 5 for implementation in September 2017. Professional development will be provided for teachers during the 15, 16 school year to provide, to prepare for curriculum writing. World languages, minor changes were made to the grade-level benchmarks and the annotated glossary indicators. Highland Park curriculum documents will be reviewed and revised as necessary. There is a change in the science department in the Highland Park High School. This is a new course that is replacing an old course. So, it was AP Physics B, and now it will be AP Physics II, which is, the prerequisite is AP Physics I. And professional development is being provided for that. Whoa, sorry, lots of papers. This will require board approval. This is from Elizabeth Pensinger, and this is, well, how do I, I don't really read the whole thing, but this is a green status that we are looking to get. It's an opportunity to partner with Rutgers and the EPA.
So, this is a read-in? This is a read-in?
Okay, so this was the motion, number 14, that we were putting forth. So, I'd like to make a motion to put this forth. So, this is an opportunity that we have...
That's what I gave you. It's the document in front of you.
So, that's, that's going to be 14?
Right, thank you.
Yep.
So, this was from the New Jersey Agricultural Experiment Station, and this involves a cooperative extension program with, it's called Project Wade's Watershed Action Dialogue Education and Stewardship. And this project will, the teachers will help plan programming with support of state and national content standards. Join a network of like-minded teachers focused on improving their environment. Gain access to resources for improving their classroom activities. Share ideas with professionals in the environmental field, earn professional development credits. And the pilot project, which is being proposed tonight, is allowing the students to gain understanding for their local watershed, make a connection to their local stream, understand how stream community health is assessed, use techniques for collecting qualitative and quantitative data, plan solutions that reduce the impacts of human activities on the environment and biodiversity. So, for the pilot project, our goal is to provide partner educators with two years of financial support through in-service learning opportunities for teachers, busing for school field trips, and provision of course materials and equipment and ongoing technical assistance. So, it doesn't sound like there's anything bad about that.
No.
There was one thing that I wanted to bring up. I don't know if now's the right time, but...
Your business.
Okay.
If we didn't talk about it in curriculum.
Hold that till later. So, I guess that's it for curriculum.
Are there any comments?
I'm losing my train all of a sudden. The AP Music Theory course, that's a, presumably a curriculum matter. Am I on the right heading here?
Yep.
I think it is, yep. Sounds like curriculum. I saw that the textbook, the increased textbook price cost would be $4,620. I'm just, as a matter of curiosity, how many students do we have who are interested in that, in that class? Do we have an, I know, we don't know exactly, but do we have a...
This is...
I mean, that's a lot of money.
What's that?
It is for next year, right?
It's for next year.
So, we have, we have a threshold, if not, if students don't sign up for it, we don't offer the course?
So, we don't buy the textbooks, presumably? We're going to buy $4,000?
That's a harder question.
Yeah.
We will not buy textbooks for a class of 10, let's say. So, that's a conversation that we'll have with Mike Lassiter and the teacher, to see how many kids actually signed up for that course.
Okay.
Once we ensure the number of kids, then we can proceed with purchasing the textbooks.
Oh, I like that.
Of course.
Sounds very rational.
We got to be cost-effective.
Right. I mean, I'll be honest with you, that's not my highest priority in terms of our spending in AP Music Theory course. I'm sure it's a wonderful course, and I know there's very talented students here and all of that. That wouldn't be where I would personally place our district's money, so I just want to make sure that $4,000 is well-spent. I saw that the renamed Music Theory course, I don't know if that's what was previously Music Theory I or Music Theory II, it's now being called Music Tech, and that's going to require another $3,900 worth of textbooks. I, I mean, I guess the same question. Seems like a lot. But I really, that's not a very specific criticism.
I think, I think one thing that we've always tried to do in this district is create parity between our sports and our arts programs. When we invest in a sports program, we also invest in an arts program.
I see.
And it just, it seems like the last investment that we really made was about a $50,000 investment into the music program, and we have kind of not enhanced our arts programs in the last three, four years, as much as we have had great art programs, great plays. So, I would think that this would be a request from the arts teacher, the music and arts teachers, but I mean, the concerns that you echo are the appropriate concerns about the class size and all of that, so...
So, we'll hear more about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think if the question is approving it or not approving it tonight, I think the board, I think the administration, even if the board approves it, won't purchase a textbook for six kids and, or a class that's not being offered.
Right, okay, wonderful. Thank you for that background.
Yep. Any other questions on the curriculum report?
Yeah, Israel, I had reached out to you about my question about the, the field trip.
Oh, right.
And then the, in addition, the acceptance of the anonymous donation. Were you able to get any more information on that?
Today, because of CUSAC...
Handling CUSAC and, you know, all these other things, you know.
Just did not have enough time to actually have that conversation with Wendy. I can have it, you know, first thing tomorrow morning.
Right.
And I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I can, we have on the agenda again this time, just so I can clarify for everyone, we have on the agenda a field trip that would only be for the gifted and talented students. And actually, I was, in looking at the list of field trips, it seems like, you know, if we just had one additional column with a tiny bit more information to let us know what grades the field trip is for, because usually it just says, you know, high school, or Bartle, or Irving, but it doesn't necessarily tell us if that's the whole school, or one grade, or part of a grade, or one class, or, that information would be helpful for the board to, you know, take a look at.
Which one, are you talking about, which one?
The GNT. Yes, it's, it is coming up.
This week?
Yeah, this week.
This Friday, the space trip, the Space Center trip, the GNT program, plus eight additional students will be going in.
What's the eight additional students?
There's, I believe there were 16, now there are 24.
Right.
I would be curious to hear more about the lottery that took place, I believe, to pick the students and how that was handled.
Yeah.
It sounds like potentially a very difficult situation.
I just continue to have concerns about multiple field trips for a very small, select group of students when entire classes at Bartle haven't had any field trips at all this year and I haven't heard of any on the horizon. You know, I think if we're, if we're accepting donations, if we're, you know, looking towards field trips, we should be looking towards things that enrich all of our students, not just a select few. So I really, I question the acceptance of anonymous donations that benefit small groups of children.
For me as well, I think the earmarking of funds for, you know, a group of students kind of, in a small district, I think that kind of leaves a bad taste in my mouth.
I encourage everybody to give us money.
Yeah, that would be great.
For anything that they would like.
I think we need to be a little more discerning.
I don't, I disagree and, yeah.
But if we're not providing enrichment to entire grades, how do we justify multiple, multiple field trips for a very small portion of children?
This is a class that has a curriculum and this is part of the curriculum for that class. It's a class that we are...
So we have certain curriculums that are more enriching for some students than for the...
It's not more or less enriching, it's part of the curriculum.
I disagree. Students being allowed to leave the building and...
For an eight-hour trip? It sounds fantastic.
That's something that all of our students should be entitled to multiple times a year. And I've spoken with PTO representatives, they simply, simply can't keep up with the requests. I mean, this is where we get into funding. There isn't a lot of money left around for all of our students to go on field trips. The PTO can't keep up with the requests. I'm sure the Ed Foundation can't keep up with the requests and we simply don't have the money. So if we're taking private donations that only impact 22 children, that makes me a little queasy.
How many times has this happened, we've gotten private donations for...
Well, I'm just saying, is this the first time?
First time.
This is the first time. Because the prior two trips were over $50 a person. These trips are expensive, they're for small numbers of children.
Right, I just wanted to be clear.
Also, I think Bartle, yeah, Bartle has that fifth grade trip that goes to Camp Bernie and they are experiencing trouble coming up with the money to provide for all of the students to go to Camp Bernie. So, you know, if you ask me, it would be my personal preference to see all of the fifth graders go to Camp Bernie with that 500 rather than 22 children take a day trip. That would be my personal feeling, but I understand this is a really sticky argument.
I think it's something that the district is doing, you know, if it's something that the district did, then yes, you don't just limit to just a certain amount of children when you can engage like a larger group, but when it's a donation thing, that makes it, I think, a little bit...
The donation kind of came after.
That's why I wanted to be sure that this was just the first one.
Right.
As far as we know.
I just want to highlight, and I'm sorry that I'm interrupting, as we have this conversation about being more equitable in the resources that we're providing for all of the students here at Highland Park, while we have GNT students that are provided with enrichment opportunities, I want everyone to know that we have increased the number of periods for enrichment for all of our students, particularly at Bartle and at Irving. Right now, through the collaboration of Kim Crane and Mr. Anthony Benjamin and a few other teachers, we all got together and we created some common planning periods for the teachers in addition to cross-curricular enrichment opportunities for the Bartle students and for the students at Irving. So, you know, true to our promise at the beginning of the year, we did expand that particular program. Should we have, can we have more trips for Bartle students? Absolutely. We need to then explore more creative ways than really how to get that done. And that's a conversation that I'll have with Anthony Benjamin, the principal, and see what ways we can come up with where we can be more inclusive in allowing more students to go into trips.
I think it's creating a little bit of bad feeling at Bartle. There's a certain group of students that goes on field trips and, you know, has special time and, I know that this is inherent tension in any GNT program, but it's, this particular format of GNT program is particularly difficult.
So I think this brings up a greater conversation that we need to have. I think if this is a particular concern for the board, we should ask the administration to pull together a presentation on the GNT program, not until necessarily, not right this second. Take your time, there's a lot to do.
No, I mean, I think we've already had a presentation on the GNT program very recently. I disagree that we need another presentation. I think we just need to specifically look at this field trip issue. It's come up multiple times now. There's been concerns expressed both with the parents in the program and parents outside the program that the field trips seem excessive and that we should be looking towards things that benefit all students.
And I disagree, I think there is a greater concern beyond just the field trips in terms of identification, in terms of placement.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and I think we, no, no, feel free.
Feel free to agree with me.
And, and it seems like the presentation we had, there were more, there were more questions brought out of that than necessarily answers. And we can, we can extend that conversation to the next level, I guess, is what I'm saying. I think, let's, let's talk about that, I guess, in new business.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things that I wanted to bring up.
Perfect.
Then, so.
Perfect.
I think people at Bartle, I'm sorry, I should have asked.
No.
It's okay. People at Bartle are pretty excited about the enrichment activities, so.
Yes, thank you so much for bringing that up.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because there was a lot of sacrifices made to bring that forth for the kids.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
People are very, very excited.
I second that.
See, you're doing something right.
Plenty, plenty, right.
Is there any other comments on the curriculum and instruction report? So no comments, can Catherine, Finance and Facility report, please?
The Finance Committee did meet tonight. I'll bring your attention to a few items on the agenda. Item 12, HP Municipal Alliance generously is donating funds again this year, $2,000 for the sticker shock program, which relating to underage drinking prevention. Item 14, we currently engage in cooperative purchasing with Hunterdon County, ESC, and Middlesex Regional. Educational Data Services is offering greater efficiencies, so we're going with them. Item 15, this relates to the anonymous parent gift for the Bueller Space and Challenge Center field trip, and we're grateful for the donation even though it is controversial. Item 16, the Ed Foundation extended its grant for the field trip to the Liberty Science Center and that also we are grateful for. And the Highland Park High School Orchestra received a Park Partners grant of $2,000 to try to fund their, their field trip to Lincoln Center. And we got $22,000 with the Bridging the Device Gap grant. This was going to be used to purchase 70 Chromebooks and three power shuttles to support them. So I love reading about grants that come into the district, it's just really good news. Item 20 and 21 is about cabling to make the copying and the printer use in the district more efficient. There are also a couple of items, another bit of good news, the Bartle School Window Replacement Project is, is pretty much done, the windows are in, it's just a finish work that needs to be done. The Parents of Athletic Teams received banners from On Point Printing at No Cost and that will be on next, next agenda. The New Jersey Department, we didn't discuss this in the, in the committee, but I'm going to read about it anyway, New Jersey Department of Agriculture.
Oh, yes, yes, good news.
So has selected Highland Park to participate in the Direct Delivery Department of Defense Produce Program for next year. We will receive DOD produce delivered directly to the district.
That is such a contradiction in terms. The Department of Defense is giving us vegetables.
It sounds like a 1950s...
Sounds delicious.
Like a 1950s...
It's like cheese, are we getting blocks of cheese or spam?
It's like post-war program, go on.
The important part is, the entitlement for the year will be $41,273 worth of fresh produce, so we're very excited about this one. That's going to save us some money. Linda will be soliciting proposals for a demographic study related to the long-range facilities plan so that we have an idea what with all the, well, demographic shifts and also the development in town to help us in determining our long-range facilities plan. Okay, that does it.
Any questions on Finance and Facilities Report? I just want to say how excited I am about the demography study, it's long overdue, it's going to really give us a lot of good insight into the services we need to offer and what we're dealing with in terms of size of our district and potential ramifications from new developments and the size of our district and costs that we might have to incur to expand our buildings. Any other comments? Jerry, can we have the Personnel Report, please?
Yes, we briefly met and discussed maternity leave replacement and a couple of disability leaves and that's it.
And may we have the Policy Report, please?
Could I ask a quick...
Sorry, yeah.
I apologize.
No, I apologize, I should have asked.
Question about personnel, I know Mr. Soto had talked, I believe at our last public meeting, about looking into alternative ways of providing substitutes and I'm, do we have an update on that or is that just sort of still in its infancy?
Still in its infancy.
Still in its infancy, okay, thank you.
I just want to let everyone know that this is actually, I know that we have been doing a lot of policies, what we have been doing, I'm not sure that the new board members are clear about this, what we have been doing is actually filling holes that were identified in our policy manual. But what we are also required to do every two years is to go through the entire manual. So the way we do that...
Please don't tell me we're up against that right now.
Yes. So the way, but the way we do that, so we will do that in a different way than we've been filling the holes. What we...
Stop. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's part of the gig.
I'm a little slap happy about policies, sorry.
So what we will be doing is, I will let you all, each committee has, and you already know this, each committee has sort of a set of the policies, you know, I think the 1,000's are personnel and so on. And so what you will, what you need to do as a committee, and they're going to do it in committee, although you will probably need to sort of make a few outside meetings because you won't be able to get it done during regular committee meetings because there's quite a lot of it, is you're just going to go through all of the policies. And you don't have to go through them all word by word, but you know, you want to take a look at the policies and then you sort of, the way that we would do it, always curriculum has the largest sort of, you know, crap.
Excellent.
Yeah. So, yeah, you'll become policy-making machines. You sort of go through and, you know, take notes and, you know, you can, I mean, a lot of the policies are going to move through the committee unchanged. And they have all been, they have all been reviewed as recently as last year. Because we didn't, we didn't completely finish in the, in the year that we were given, but, but this is, this is what has to happen this year. So I will perhaps prepare for the next meeting, the, the list of policies that each committee has to address.
What's our end date?
Oh, it's done?
No, well, Susan is actually...
Poor Susan. Sorry, Susan, Susan, I just...
Hold on, guys, calm down.
Can you focus on me?
Guys.
Stop.
Susan has prepared the old-school binders for all of us with every single policy that we have approved over the last year. They are going to be curried over to everybody's home.
So we don't, we don't want the ones we've approved in the last year, we want...
It's going to be everything.
Everything, okay.
So it's the full, it is the full, it is the full policy book.
We're each going to have our own binder that we can bring to...
I have, yeah.
Jerry's like, yeah, no, thanks.
Well, you know, it makes more sense for her to sort of divide it up and just give, because otherwise...
Each committee, give each committee theirs.
So everybody will have, guys, everybody will have a policy manual that they can reference at their home. You can take out whatever sections you want from it, but I saw the binders.
I think I disagree too.
That seems wasteful.
It's already done.
It seems wasteful to me.
It's already done.
It's already done.
It's online.
I understand, I understand all that. It's something that the administration thought would be useful and I actually agree. I have my old-school binder at home and it's sometimes just good to look at. They will be updated and changed as needed, but it will, each person individually will have at their own home a policy manual that is all the same font and all the same policies that we have updated, or every policy that we have.
Yeah, not just the ones we've updated.
No, every policy.
Actually, that's, that's a completely separate issue. So I think that it...
She's going to add these tonight.
Once we finish these, we will have addressed the holes that were identified in our policy manual and now we have to then...
And you also actually have the regulations in that as well. So you'll have policy and regulation, so it's two binders.
Beach reading.
Yeah, beach reading.
Binder's full of policy.
Okay, well, that was the policy report.
So are we, does that mean we're tabling all the ones that were on for tonight so that, no? Oh, oh, okay.
These are actually on second.
Oh, on second, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there aren't any for first.
Gotcha.
And so the one, the one that we want to discuss, I think, with, in some detail is, is the one that you've raised, that you have provided us material on, so I think the rest, well, it doesn't matter.
I have a total procedural question. Did we, to the best of my knowledge, at our first January meeting, we didn't appoint a policy committee?
Well, the policy committee is appointed by, Ann is the chair of the policy committee and then each committee, so you never appoint the policy committee at the first meeting because each committee is responsible for appointing one of their members to sit on the policy committee.
Okay, but we haven't done that.
Each committee has to have that discussion if they have not had it already.
But we weren't told to do that.
But the policy committee is not actually...
A standing committee.
This is not, yeah, it's a standing committee, but it's not required for...
It is not a standing committee.
I thought it was a standing committee.
No, it is not.
Okay, well, in any case, it isn't required for this because the policy review actually takes place in committee.
Right, but so are we saying we're not going to have a policy committee this year?
No, we are, you have to...
Okay, but you didn't tell us that.
I did.
You didn't ask the committees to do that.
I think that's not true and I'm telling you now, it's, there's no need for it right this second, but I'm asking you right now, the chairs of the committee by the next meeting should have, you guys should discuss it in meeting, in committee and pick one representative from each committee to sit on the policy committee.
And have that by the next meeting or...
Yeah, I just said that. And also, the one other thing, just to add, the policy committee does have one responsibility in the policy review, it is the bylaw section of it. So that at some point, they will have to sit and do. Is there any comments on the policy report?
Well, the policies are second reading. I'm a little embarrassed, I should have probably gone through that policy and redlined it with my suggestions so that we can have a basis for discussion rather than just presenting a bunch of materials.
Can you just say which, it's, I know it's restrained.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's number...
5561?
Yeah, 5561. I mean, would it be appropriate to table it or...
We can table it if you would like and discuss it next time, sure.
That'd be fantastic, I'm sorry that I was not...
No problem.
It's 5561, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing as there's no comments, I'm going to move to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public comment, public participation and reserves this time for your comments. Please sign in and state your name and address for the record, please.
I've certainly got a lot to say. First, I'd like to do a recap of the last time that I was up here speaking, about a month ago, we wanted to report on some progress with, we had a situation with the business office and our retro checks. The communication has greatly improved between the association and the business office. Ms. Huffla has reached out to us several times to discuss and come up with a plan for issues that were appropriate to discuss with the association and we appreciate that change. So we feel that that issue is making progress. Thank you, Ms. Huffla. And thank you to Israel too, for facilitating that change and explaining a lot of the procedural issues that came, that allowed that occurrence with our retro checks to occur. I have some comments on policy. Policy number 3282 and 4282, these are the policies on social networking sites for both teaching staff members and support staff members. We have an issue with item seven on page two of either one of those policies, they're both pretty much written the same. Item seven and item eight, it states that there, that teachers would be, or staff, support staff members would be prohibited from using their school district title as well as adding references to correspondence, blogging sites, and it goes on to talk about unless communication is of an official nature, prohibits signature lines and personal email accounts. This is a problem for us because we're proud of what we do and we would like to state that we are from the district. There are clear lines that are drawn between the opinions of staff, there are many policies, many laws, many situations where educators are taken to task and held accountable for their comments. And we educate our members as best we can as to where those lines are. To put in a policy that we're not, that we're in some sort of violation of this policy or anything else to state that we are a member of the district is concerning to us because we're proud of where we work and we want people to know where we work. And we're well aware of the things that we can and cannot say. Number eight, shall not post updates to their status on any social networking sites during normal working hours, including posting of statements or comments on the social networking sites or of others during school time unless it involves a school project. Employees must seek approval from superintendent. I had a conversation with the board president about this. There are situations, social media is now a part of our life. This policy, while we're certainly not opposed to that applying to times when teachers and staff are supposed to be working during lunchtime, we would like that clarified. It's absolutely necessary during lunchtime at times to communicate with our relatives and I'll illustrate a personal example. I had a relative recently with a very ill nephew and the only way that we were communicating was Facebook because she was in the hospital with her kids and I didn't want to call. And that's how, where she receives support from her family because you can't make phone calls when you're in the hospital. That was essential. Was I doing that while I was teaching? Was I doing that while I was teaching? Absolutely not. Was I doing it on my lunch break? Yeah, because that was how I was connecting to my family. And it's, at this point, you know, you're not going to restrict educators from making a phone call to their family during lunch. Social media has become the same way of communicating. The rest of the policy, we didn't have really, you know, most of these policies are things that are already outlined, and it's actually kind of shocking that out of all of the policies that there, there's only a few things that we're taking issue with at this point, and it's mostly wording. The next policy is policy 4281, inappropriate staff conduct. The fourth paragraph down explains that school staff's conduct and completing their professional responsibilities shall be appropriate at all times, and then goes on to talk about appropriate conduct, staff should not seek or engage people present, lots of things that are, again, already known. I'm not sure that we need a policy to illustrate once again the responsibility of teachers, and this is also on the back of this policy. The second page talks about DIFIS and responsibility of personnel to report things if they see colleagues engaging in this type of behavior. All of this is, is encompassed in DIFIS law, and I'm not sure why we have a policy on inappropriate staff conduct that is also, you know, makes references to the New Jersey Department of Children and Families. So, you may want to consider making that two policies instead of having that under an inappropriate staff conduct clause. Moving on to the, oh, before I forget, I would like to invite the Board of Education to our Take the Park event on Thursday in the high school cafeteria. We have rented the cafeteria from the Board of Education, so we are paying for the use of the facility. We will have been inviting community legislators, parents, staff, of course, the board, and our administrators to this event. This event is to outline the procedures of PARK, to educate parents from, from an educator's perspective on how this test is taken, as well as the controversies swirling around the test. And this will be presented, as I said, from an educator's view, so you are welcome to come. You can take the test. You can hear the commentary from speakers that we will be having across the state. Come and talk about, you know, the, the levels, the difficulty, and many of the other concerns around this test. We will have lots of materials available for people, and we'll be having a spirited discussion about opt-out, about policies. We are not, while we are not encouraging people to opt-out, it's definitely a topic of discussion, and it's a topic that the association is broaching because there have been many, many questions of our educators, and we feel that it's more appropriate to address this in a forum instead of having people go to our individual members and have comments given that way. There were many comments made during the board, the presentation to the board on budget this evening that are concerning to the association. While it was a well-put-together presentation, the suggestion that we would outsource paraprofessionals is incredibly unacceptable, and I can't even believe that we're talking about this. We, you know, I have to tell you, we're looking at bringing our custodians back into our unit because we've had reports recently of ill treatment to our custodians. And while that's not our jurisdiction right now, that's something that, you know, we were hoping to have a conversation of. So, to hear that we would even entertain a conversation about outsourcing our paraprofessionals was shocking, absolutely shocking, and we were absolutely blindsided by that statement. As well as the kindergarten paras, thank you to Michelle for outlining what it would be like in a classroom. Our kindergarten paras are essential. These paraprofessionals, there were many things on the paraprofessional discussion that were concerning to us, particularly, you know, the number, talking about the number of paras, we just also heard in juxtaposition that we're talking about bringing special needs kids back into the district. You're going to need paras for the special needs kids. If you're looking at consolidating classrooms in every level, including kindergarten, you're going to need paras to support those children in those classrooms. And while we appreciate that there are budget constraints and that there are things that absolutely need to be looked at, and we are absolutely in support of placing the right professional with the right child, with the right student to help, we are absolutely opposed to and, and will fight with every fiber of our being, the outsourcing of our paraprofessionals. Trenton recently was in the news for laying off, I think, 140 people. There were 50, around 50 CST members. They, we're not Trenton. We're not Trenton. We don't want to go down that road. We don't, we don't have any reason to have this, this kind of, other than, you know, I understand it was presented just as something that you're looking at, but I can't even tell you the phone calls that I'm going to get tomorrow from people that are afraid for their jobs. And this is where we were last year. This is, this is not the second chapter. This is not the second chapter of, you know, I'm looking forward to putting out another article on how great Highland Park is doing, and we're doing wonderful things. We really are. We stick to that. But this, this type of conversation, looked at, you know, projective, whatever, is slowing down that process of the second chapter. I'd also like to talk about, you know, paying for subs. We are, we are hiring, we, I, there were many points in the budget conversation that we have questions about, and I think it would probably be more appropriate for the association to sit down with Mr. Soto and talk about these than to, rather than to outline all of them here, because I've made lots of notes. The sixth period is certainly something that we have been having discussions with. That was something we were prepared for. We would like to assure our membership that, as Mr. Soto stated here tonight, that anything that was looked at with this, with the sixth period would be contractual. It would not mean extra work for teachers. It may mean a cost savings because people are simply not teaching extra work. And if you're not teaching extra work, you're not paid for extra work, and there's your cost savings. And maybe you hire two more staff members to fill in the gap, so you're spending a little to save a lot. That is a conversation that, as Mr. Soto said, that we will continue to have with the building principals and him, and further the discussion with our staff. And we understand that everything needs to be presented, however, it really, the para conversation was a shock. The $70,000 for landscaping, maybe we stop trimming the bushes. That's a huge increase. The 100 and, what?
Nothing.
Okay. The 135 plus, 135,000 plus 104,000, that was indicated, that was being, that our kindergarten paras were costing us. I'm not sure where those numbers came from, and again, Mr. Soto and I will have a conversation about that. I'm not sure if that was because we happened to have in our kindergarten classroom some of our most experienced paras because they are needed there, and because they have been working with, with earlier education for a long time, and because their salaries are higher since they have been here for so long. So, I'm interested to see where those numbers came from. And I'm also interested to see where the $357 in negotiated contract increases came from, because we just went through those numbers. So, I'm interested to see how those figures break down as well. And I would like to end with the fact that absolutely the health insurance premiums are killing us. We will be, they're killing the board, they're killing us, because we will be moving on to our contributions. We will be now in the, as required by the state, we will be moving on to the third tier, which is a much higher contribution in September. So, we are absolutely paying into this much more than we have. In fact, we have members on our salary guide right now, at the top of the guide, that will be in September, or if they are not already, making less than they were three years or four years ago. Taking, actually taking home less in their paychecks. So, they are killing everyone with, with the health insurance costs, and NJEA is actually working on a plan right now with legislator, legislature, to address some of those issues, and you can look forward to an update from that to, you know, something in the future. We're working on different options for healthcare. And we look forward to the conversations with Mr. Soto, hopefully sometime this week, on clarifying some of the budget numbers. I will be sending out a memo tonight to our staff, just so nobody, no one is concerned about their jobs, and outlining what we will be doing about the budget. It's a pretty bleak perspective for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Am I there?
Good evening.
My teacher voice, this is awkward. Good evening. My name is Kaya Schlesinger, and I am a parent of a seventh grade student. I'm here with another Highland Park parent, Anna Pere Vinas, to express our concerns about the lack of a bilingual parent advisory committee in the Highland Park public schools. I'm a new parent to the Highland Park School District. This past August, I registered my stepdaughter, who is bilingual in French and English. I have since joined the Highland Park Parents of Students of Color Bilingualism and Diversity Committee, where I learned that the district doesn't have a bilingual parent advisory committee established. According to the NJ State Bilingual Code, and I quote, "Each district board of education shall provide for the maximum practical involvement of parents of LEP students in the development and review of program objectives and dissemination of information to and from the district boards of education and communities served by bilingual ESL or English Language Services education programs. Each district board of education implementing a bilingual education program or any district providing a bilingual alternative through a waiver, shall establish a parent advisory committee on bilingual education, of which the majority membership shall be parents of LEP students. In addition, the U.S. Department of Justice's Civil Rights Division and the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights recently published joint guidance to school districts reminding them of their legal obligations to protect the rights of English learners. We are here asking you, the board of education and the superintendent, to establish a bilingual parent advisory committee as soon as possible in order to not only meet legal obligations, but to inform and engage families of English learners in our town."
Can I ask a question?
Anne, I'm sorry, we're going to have to, we're going to have to wait to new business.
Okay, can I ask a clarifying question? About like what, where this document is that she's referring to? Or, no?
We're, yeah, no, it's, public comment is for the public, and we're going to, for this time, we're going to do all board comments during new business.
Oh, okay. No problem.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
I'm Anna Pere, 344 Becker Street, and I'm aware of all the initiatives in this district concerning English learners, including recently the Broadgoose Conversation Cafe for adult English learners, parents of English learner students, and also the after-school ESL program, which is wonderful. In the spirit of inclusion and, and equity that is outlined in new policy on Title I district-wide parent, parent involvement, it's page 13 of the policy booklet. I was very happy to read about that policy, and I hope I have a chance to, to learn more about it. I will just read what Kaya said in Spanish. I'm sorry for taking your time.
That's right.
But I think symbolically, it's a little, just...
Go ahead.
A little gesture towards our Latino community, and if I knew Mandarin, I would translate it Mandarin too, but I can't. Buenas noches, me llamo Anna Pairedt y soy madre de un alumno de cuarto grado. Estoy aquí con otra madre, Kaya Schlesinger, para expresar nuestra preocupación sobre la ausencia de una comisión consultativa de familias bilingües en las escuelas públicas de Highland Park. La familia de Kaya acaba de integrarse al distrito de Highland Park. En agosto pasado, registró a su hijastra, que es una alumna bilingüe francés e inglés. Desde entonces, ha participado como yo misma en un comité sobre bilingüismo y diversidad, organizado por el grupo de familias de estudiantes de color de Highland Park, donde se enteró que nuestro distrito no tiene establecido una comisión consultativas de familia bilingüe, según establece el código del estado de New Jersey. I'll just read the next word in translation, like you just heard. Cada distrito de, al consejo de educación que implementa un programa de educación bilingüe, o cualquier distrito que administra una alternativa bilingüe a través de una dispensación, debe establecer un comité, un comité consultativo sobre educación bilingüe, en la cual la mayoría de los miembros deben ser padres de estudiantes con competencia limitada en inglés. Por otra parte, la división de derechos civiles del Departamento de Justicia de los Estados Unidos y la Oficina de Derechos Civiles del Departamento de Educación publicaron este mes de enero unas directivas conjuntas para los distritos escolares, recordándoles su obligación legal de proteger los derechos de los aprendices de inglés, English learners. Hoy pedimos por consiguiente al Consejo de Educación y al señor superintendente que se establezca lo antes posible una comisión consultativa de familias bilingües, no solo para cumplir con obligaciones legales, pero también para informar y comunicar con las familias de los alumnos que están aprendiendo inglés en nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Yeah.
I want to thank you for communicating to the board and to me the need to establish a bilingual advisory committee, and we're going to look into it, and we're going to move very quickly in doing this, and I'll be getting in contact with you. And for our Latino community, yo también hablo español, y quiero que sepan que yo también soy bien sensitivo para la necesidad de la comunidad hispana, y siendo hispano quiero ser su representante, porque en contar conmigo. Gracias.
And if you don't mind passing on the letters, the board, board members would like to see the information in them.
I still sent the letter, but I didn't know that.
Either, either or, whatever's easier. You signed, you signed in, correct? Both of you? Did you sign in?
I signed in.
Yeah, just making sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we want to pass this?
Give it to Linda, and she'll give it to the board. Scan it and send it to the board.
I think we did get it.
Yeah.
My name is, I hate these things. My name is Oscar Marina, 217 Harper Street. So, two things. First, I'm going to talk about the process of how we finalized on the mascots, so you guys were all on the same page and aware. The other thing is, you did mention, Michelle, about Camp Bernie and how it's running at Camp Bernie, it's been funded by the Ed Foundation for years and will continue to do so.
Half-funded.
Half-funded? Okay. That's what I text. I wasn't sure. But if we could fund it fully, then that's something we need to discuss in the future with the Ed Foundation. Concerning the mascots, it started actually last year. We were discussing about the website, and I asked Chris for the actual artwork of the mascots. Nobody knew where they were. Nobody knew where they came from. We just had them on the website, and then to further research, you'll notice they did not match what we had in the buildings. They did not match what we had on T-shirts. They did not match on anything that we owned or had. And if I knew that was going to open up Pandora's Box, I would have left it closed. So, from that research, we found out that the, for example, Irving Dragon, there's two versions of it. The first one is a drawing that's hanging on the wall in the office of Irving, and the one that's on the website was pulled off of Google. Both of them, we do not own, because we don't really, originally, the one on the wall in Irving was drawn by a parent about at the beginning of when Irving was built and formed. So, we have no idea of where the original artwork is. That's the only thing of the dragon. Same with Bardot. No idea where the dolphin came from. We have more than one dolphin. Middle School doesn't have a mascot. Never has had one. They have been borrowing the high school mascot. High school mascot, we have about four or five different versions of an owl. They're not consistent. We have to the point where the schools are now, the students on their T-shirts are actually drawing their own owls. So, to the fact that we have known, we had no consistency of mascots, we did not own the artwork, we did not have any artwork, we were not able to reproduce, we were not able to move forward with the website, and this led us to starting to work on creating a consistently sick look and a mascot and having, making sure we can own them. Because by not owning the mascot and copyright laws, we are not allowed to sell any of the T-shirts. So, that is actually because we, it's a profit. You can own a piece of art and, but as soon as you sell it, that's when you can get into trouble. Now, do I think we'll technically get into trouble? No, I do not. But why leave that road open and have the possibility that it can be? So, we started drawing the mascots, and with the administrative, Mr. Soto, he was very determined that he wanted input from the staff members and the principals. We started talking to principals, we started talking to staff members, the principals would show all the mascots to the staff members. We got input back from Irving, especially Irving. Some of the staff were very attached to certain looks of mascots. They were attached to the... They were attached to the dragon that was in the office. We incorporated a little bit of everything because we also understood, especially I would understand, that the kids are very used to seeing a purple dragon. So that's why we kept a consistency, but we changed some of it. Made it a little bit of our own and it was approved by them. Made older staff and younger staff happy because we combined all pieces together. Same thing with Bardot. Reached out, got some feedback, they came back to us. We didn't like this, we want this changed. Middle School, because they had no mascot, they were just happy with what they got. And I purposely tried to create a mascot that would have a little bit of an attitude, you know, like the younger brother who is just, you know, pain in the ass. Changing to the high school. The high school was, I know, it was a slip. The high school got a lot more involvement. The high school, there was a variety of owls. The one that the students are very passionate about is the owl that's painted on the wall, right as you walk in. We tried our best, I really tried my best to incorporate that into a digital file. It's almost impossible to do so. Talked to the student, see if she wanted to redraw it on the computer. She said she didn't want to. This was something that was voted by the student government, that they wanted this owl incorporated somehow. So this is where we got the idea of redoing a mascot with the wings open. Also because I thought it would look really cool on a football helmet, to have the wings. Concerning the H and the P, that is very easy to drop off, put on, put off. But I think the most important thing is that the school, the principals, the staff members and the students really like the mascots that they have. And we are in a position right now that the school needs to own and brand and have a look and it has to be consistent. And that was one of the reasons why we have a baby owl growing to be the full owl. And the idea of having the wings open is the idea, you're in high school, you're growing, you're flying out into the world when you graduate. We also needed going into the 21st century, social networking, publications, everything. We needed it vector art, we needed it computerized. So, for example, we cannot move forward with our new website without having these mascots done and moving forwards. But the point of it is, I wanted to explain to you, this was a decision that was very involved, principal, staff, and especially high school students. At one point, we were thinking of having, doing, having the students actually draw and then having the students vote. Mr. Soto was very nervous that that would not be fair because then you're putting the students voting against their own peers. So that was scratched off the table. A lot of thought went into how to approach this, without giving it a new look, but without knowing where it came from. So, just so you have an idea, it wasn't done very, you know, no thought behind it.
That was actually, that was a very good clarification and good insight onto where, how this came to fruition.
It's been many, many months. And the high school was
We can't, you know, I'm, all right, thank you, thank you. And thank you for all your work, I appreciate it and the board appreciates it as well.
Yeah, before we begin with the next speaker, thank you Saskia for that point of clarification. But I would also like to clarify a comment for Kim Crane. The presentation that we did today, in terms of the budget, by no means, we're looking at eliminating Paris. It was a point of clarification, how much of Paris? It's a breakdown, right, of course. We have 50 Paris, this is how much it's costing us. We're looking at, so I don't want the message to be relayed back to the Paris that they're in danger of losing their jobs. That was the intent. When we discussed the six Paris that are in kindergarten, it was a point of information. I'm not suggesting to eliminate Paris in kindergarten. It's a point of information. If the board would decide to do such, they would be redeployed somewhere else. So, there was no point of the presentation indicating and suggesting that Paris will be eliminated. What we are looking at is, if we have 50 Paris that we're paying for, we want to make sure that we have all of the efficiencies in place because we need all 50 Paris. It makes no sense for us to have 50 Paris when we truly only need 40.
Correct.
But if we need all 50, when it is what it is, right? Like the old saying. So I just wanted to make a point of, you know, clarify that for Kim Crane and all of the Paris in this district.
Thank you, Israel.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darryl Voorhees, 300 Donaldson Street, Highland Park. I have a second grader, eight years old, just started borough this year. He's having a great time in school. He enjoys it. He doesn't struggle with some of the, you know, focus issues that some people might have, usually. He's also very active. We actually put a Fitbit on him in the beginning of the year for curiosity. We were blown away. 18,000 steps. And we sampled it a few times, just to be sure. It was 18,000 steps, over four miles. So that's a typical day, the beginning of the year. And that was great. He's been coming home, you know, you get home in the winter, it's a little bit darker. Maybe it's colder out. I understand that you don't go outside. But it definitely was something else at home. He was, it was a whole other level of something else going on. So we talked to him and he went over a change that was going on with recess, which he didn't really want to call recess. You know, it was no longer running around the gym. Apparently, I guess, with the new schedule, which I guess was implemented December? I forget exactly when. January. They're going back into the classrooms, there's more board games sitting, that sort of thing. He's not getting, we haven't done the Fitbit again, but I can guarantee it's nowhere near the 18,000 steps. And it's showing at home. And I'm sure that it's showing at home, the same thing is happening at school. And, you know, there's no shortage of studies that show that it does affect performance academically. They're not getting their exercise in. And it's also mandated for, what, two and a half hours? 150 minutes a week. And if they're doing this thing in school, in class, recess, they're certainly not getting that. So I guess the new schedule created this thing. So if there's any way to look at that and maybe change course, that would be great. I noticed it and it'd be great to change.
Thank you. Israel, do you want to address that?
Yes, very quickly, let me address it. I want to thank you so much for highlighting that and this is a situation that has been brought to my attention and it grieves my heart. Trust me, it really does. But this is the trade-off. We had a situation in this district where kids that were participating in physical education classes, we had an inordinate number of students in one particular gym class and we needed to break up that class because it was, quite frankly, it was very, very dangerous. This was a conversation that, and a concern that was addressed early on, early, you know, September, October. We did promise the community that we were going to do whatever is necessary to reduce class size in gym because the gym teachers were very concerned about the number of kids. That's number one. Number two, we wanted to address the situation that we wanted to be more equitable in the number of periods of enrichment activities provided for more students. And we also wanted to provide teachers with the opportunity for common planning. Not common preps like last year, but actually common planning. So what was the trade-off? So now, we don't have enough, we don't have the facilities and/or the people to take the kids out, particularly in the wintertime. Therefore, they've been engaged in the classrooms, doing classroom activities. I can assure you that springtime or as soon as it gets a little warmer, the kids will be back outside. We're gonna take a second look at it. It's not gonna happen this year. We're not gonna change the schedule, but certainly I'll have conversations with the principals, taking that into consideration for next year as they prepare a new schedule for next year, where we can have opportunities for the kids to go outside, where we can still keep the physical education classes, reduce class size, we can maintain the enrichment programs for the kids and have that common planning. So just bear with us. I can certainly understand your perspective. Thank you.
Virginia Lofton, 303 South Second Avenue. I have two comments. One is about the branding of the mascots. A few years ago, I visited a town, I think it was, I don't know what it was, Ridgefield, Ridge, someplace up north. And every single store had the school, some sort of school banner. They were hanging from the post. The entire town was wrapped up in the school. And I thought it was great. And I tried to talk about it here when I was on the PTO and there wasn't much interest at Bardot. So maybe, you know, if you get the town involved, and I see that we have the owls out, but getting stores to posting it, it was really great to see that town. My other question is about the budget. You said that we're having an increase in cost for technology upgrades. Like a lot of parents, I'm concerned about park and I'd like to know what percentage of that cost this year is related to park and last year? How much was related to park?
In the case of the hardware that we have purchased, it was a win-win. We needed the hardware for park. But, you know, for those of us that are instructional leaders, we go beyond park. These were hardware that the kids actually needed for instruction. And so I don't view things just as park. I view it as how can, park is, you know, a few days. Now, what are we gonna do to support instruction for children, particularly using hardware during the entire year? So our focus was really focused on, you know, using it as an instructional tool because in the long run, that's where they're gonna be using the most. So for us, it was a double win. We took care of the park situation and we took care of using it as an instructional tool.
Did you say park is two days?
No, no, it's very yes, because you have two parts of park.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, two parts. All right, but we want to use the laptops as an instructional tool rather than just focusing on park. Unfortunately, because of the mandates of park, we need those laptops.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Allison Solerno, I live on Grant Avenue. I have a couple of different things, brief things to say. First of all, Mr. Soto, I really appreciate the budget presentation. I understand it's just the beginning, but I thought it was really clear and gave us something kind of to think about, to chew on. I really appreciate that. And I knew and I can see, continue it, how many, how much pressure you guys are under the whole board in trying to, there's just, you have a lot on your plate and a lot of challenges. I also wanted to say that, Mr. Soto, what you said about the, I was happy to hear that you have professionally had experience with successful collaborative classrooms. As someone who works in special ed as a teacher, to me, and I'm not saying you disagree, but from my perspective, the most important thing is to give both the general ed teacher and the special ed teacher proper professional training. I can't, I've only worked as a special ed teacher for five years and I can't tell you how many hours and hours I've been in co-teaching workshops and had coaching from the child study team and so forth. And when our child was in the district, I did not, as a special ed student, I did not get the impression that was happening here. And so I would hate for you to throw the baby out with the bathwater and just not go with the co-teaching model or the collaborative model, but I think, you know, we really need to support the teachers and train them. It's not part of education school, a teacher's school at all, that I've seen from folks who come out of the general ed background and even a special ed background. Anyway, the other thing is, I don't know if any of you have ever tried to clean a 17-year-old's bedroom? But I did that after my son graduated from Highland Park High School. He was in Spain. I really don't go into his room much for lots of different reasons, involving food and just, it's gross. But I was like, he's away, I'm gonna go in his room. And I probably found, now this is after he walked across the stage and got his diploma, probably about $1,000 worth of textbooks from his, all his years in Highland Park High School.
Can we have them back?
So I do take some responsibility for the textbook loss, okay?
Did you return them though?
I did. And what happened then was actually quite disappointing and, as a taxpayer, I was horrified. And there were also like library books from the school library. And so I drove over with my bundle to the high school. It was really, I mean, seriously, because I know those textbooks are like $175, I'm serious, about $1,000 worth of books. I went to the main office, it was summer, and I said, you know, I have textbooks for my son. They said, just put them in that pile over there. They never asked my name, we never got a bill, and it was just literally in a pile. And as a taxpayer, well, there's lots of reasons that upset me. We're not teaching our kids, including my kid, a personal responsibility for his materials. There's also the budgetary issue. You know those textbooks are really expensive. The other incident that happened that same school year, now this is not this school year, this is last school year. My other son was a freshman in a college prep class and he came home and he said, "We're getting extra credit from the teacher if we bring in our own To Kill a Mockingbird book." And I was like, "What's the problem?" And he said, "Well, they ran out of books." And I really had a philosophic problem with, you know, because some, I have easy access, I mean, I would, you know, I could easily buy the whole class books. And I would, I offered to, actually. I called the teacher and I'm like, "Can I help you with something? Because this doesn't make sense." And she said, "Well, the policy is, you know, the kids lose the books and just the way the high school was being run." And I had eventually ended up to the principal, who said it was from the superintendent, so. Basically, the kids were not being held responsible for lost books. And I said, "I will, I do not feel comfortable," I talked to the then-principal, "just from a philosophic standpoint, offering some kids whose parents go to Barnes &amp; Noble or can get on amazon.com, my kid shouldn't be getting extra credit." When, you know, like, that's not comfortable to me. And he, it was the former principal, he said, "We'll take care of it." Like something happened where they all got their To Kill a Mockingbird books. But he indicated it was a policy of two superintendents ago that, and I don't know, you know, I don't know. I just know what I encountered as a parent last year. Now, I'm hopeful that, I can't imagine you think that's a good policy. And he said, I cannot remember his name, but this gentleman, two principals ago at the high school, said he had kids regularly walking on graduation owing 300, 400, 1,000 with my kid, I'm sure. So it's just something, like moving forward, as we say. We just need to take a look at this. We need to teach our kids, including my own children, some accountability for their personal property. And it's not their property, it's the school property. So anyway, I just wanted to put that in your ear as something to look into because I can't imagine that's something you're happy hearing.
No.
Right?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I definitely think, I definitely think we should review our policy and you should have a conversation with the principals to set expectations as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Graff, I live at 137 Hill Street. I just have a really short comment, maybe just to express agreement with or to, you know, maybe help reinforce some comments that were made earlier during the budget discussion by some folks on the board. A point which I really agree with, which is is just the idea that the board, you know, can and should play an advocacy role at this point in terms of the various forces that are acting on this district and many other districts in terms of helping to create the kind of situation we find ourselves in now, year in and year out, with regard to the school budget, right? And an ongoing shift of costs being sort of transferred over to property taxes, you know, local taxes. know, local taxes, in order to fund more and more of the services that we need. And I think what we're seeing is that it's an untenable situation over the long term, you know. It seems like we can't cut our way out of this, right? And I think that means that the role that the board, together with the community, plays in all of this, has to adapt to the situation, right? I mean, I really think that, you know, if the board leads, people will follow. Like, we know there is energy in this town, you know, around education issues. So I really hope that that is something that the board, you know, makes a conscious choice to do. I think it matters how you talk about the budget to people, certainly, how you present it, how the information is contextualized, right? If you just talk about how dire the situation is, it doesn't agitate or galvanize anybody to action, right? It just depresses everybody. I mean, so it's about explaining the seriousness of the situation, but also about what is at the root of that. But also, rather than just, you know, expecting, explaining to people what's happening, that that's somehow going to move them to action, I think you have to lead people, right? They will follow you, we will follow you, right? If you lead also in terms of thinking about what you as a board can do, what are the avenues available to you in order to really proactively push, for instance, the state legislature, or the governor's office, or any other number of places, right, that are acting on us right now, to really take public stands and send a message, as I think, you know, a number of boards in the state have started to do, about this is an untenable, unacceptable situation, right? We can't just sit here and constantly implement one cut after another that comes down onto us. And it's hard work, and it's certainly a responsibility that the community has as well. It's not something that just sits on your shoulders. But I think, you know, you have the potential to really help sort of motivate people to get involved in that process. So I just want to support that idea.
Thank you. I mean, I'm, I can't handle it. It's turning me insane, this buzzing. I'm sorry for everybody.
Oh, it's terrible.
It's untenable.
It's a boiler.
It's untenable.
It is untenable.
Yeah. I know. Go on, sorry.
What's the mics?
It is, no, it's not, it's not, it's not even.
Not the mics.
Yeah. No, it is the mics, it's just not, there's nothing we can do about it. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's really annoying. I'm Lynn Fryer, 314 Wayne Street, and I'm glad to see as part of the packet that you guys are working on a policy for the Park Test and parents that have chosen to opt their children out, because I'm one of those parents. I'm a little, I would like to hear a little more about that and have that fleshed out because there's, I guess there are different grades of opting out, and some of them sit a little better with me than others. And then my other comment, also to the Park Test, is I have, you know, two kids, and they're both incredibly bright and manifest that in different ways, but my daughter is a very conventional learner and, you know, always very engaged and interesting in school. And her comment on how's school going, what's new, is she's just bored. And I can't help thinking that this doesn't have something to do with park preparation. And it breaks my heart. And just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you. We are going to discuss the Park portion of tonight in new business, so I hope you can stick around for a few minutes. Until then.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing as there's no other public comment, I want to thank everybody for their comments. We'll get back to those who we took note of. Can we have the board action items now? Michelle, would you be willing to move the curriculum motions, including the read-ins?
I'm sorry, there are so many papers, I don't even know what I'm doing. Anyway, they are 1 through 14.
Correct. And did we actually, did we actually say a motion for number 14?
I don't think we did.
I don't think so.
So I'd like to move on behalf of the curriculum committee, items 1 through 14.
But 14 is on the, yeah. So you'd make a motion on the recommendation of the superintendent to?
Approve the development of a project-based environmental science course.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion.
And is there a second for Michelle's 1 through 14?
Second. Thank you.
Yep. Are there any comments, further comments? Yep.
Only the comment that I am going to approve that field trip and then finance the acceptance of that donation with the proviso that we're looking at this moving forward. I don't want to, you know.
Prevent the kids from going.
Exactly.
Much appreciated.
But I do expect that we'll take a really hard look at this.
Yeah, I think we should. Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Catherine?
I move items 1 through 22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other further comments? Linda, a roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Can I have, Jerry, the personnel, the personnel communications?
Can I, I'd like to move items 1 through 9 on the agenda.
Is there a second? Linda, I'm sorry, is there any further comments? Linda, a roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Ann, can we have the policy motions, please?
Yes, I'd like to move the policies, item number one, with the exception of 5561, which I'd like to table.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, was that 5561?
5561.
Okay.
The one that Ann is going to make comments on?
That would be straight.
No, that, it's fine, yeah. I was just clarifying.
Oh, I'm sorry. The only comment I wanted to make, most of them say February 9th is the second reading date, but I'm sure that'll be changed.
Oh, yeah. The policies themselves actually say February, yeah. So she'll have to go in and search and destroy.
Yeah. So I do have one comment. I would actually agree with Kim on item 8 of 3282. The shall not, teachers shall not post updates of their status to social networking sites during normal working hours. I think we should include, I think we should exclude lunch from that and allow them, but the other ones, I think, should stay as is.
So do we want to read that in?
Yeah.
So Linda?
I had a motion to amend. I don't.
Well, didn't we also, because she also expressed a concern about whether or not they could use their title?
Yeah.
And wasn't it the discussion of the board that it was with discretion?
Was that a discussion at last board meeting?
Discussion during first reading.
I think so, yeah. Last meeting.
That it could be with discretion, that they could use their title, particularly in professional use, but the intent there was only to prohibit them from using that title if it was in a derogatory or abject use of that title.
My concern would be, discretion, I think is fair, but my concern would be that, plus the illusion that they're speaking on behalf of the district.
Sure, right.
Well, but, I mean, as a board member, we can use our title, but you have to give the proviso that you're not speaking for the board. So, you know, if I testify somewhere, I say I'm a member of the Highland Park Board of Education, but I am not speaking on behalf of the board, teachers should have that same right. So, you know, I'd certainly be willing to table 3282 and 4282. They're not mandatory. It would give either you, Adam, or you and Israel, the opportunity to sit down with Kim, hash out language that's agreeable to everyone. It's not putting us at risk for anything for CUSAC. I don't see the danger in doing that.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
You okay with that? So number eight, though, everybody's okay with changing eight to just lunch hours, correct?
Yep.
I mean, if we're tabling, then let's table just three.
Okay. But if I rewrite, I just want the sense of the board, so we can, I don't, we don't go through six loops, six loops.
Oh, yeah, on eight, yeah, I agree with that part.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so then I would like to move item 1, with the exception of 3282, 4282, and 5561, which we would like to table.
Second.
Second. I'm just nodding, I'm sorry.
Any other further comments? Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. All right. Sorry, guys. President's report, short president's report. Myself and Israel met with two parents and a child psychologist over the last few weeks to discuss the transgender policy. We took their concerns, we took their concerns and their information provided to us, and I am taking responsibility to rewrite the transgender policy, to include many of the concerns that we wholeheartedly agreed with, to make it more friendly for students and more equitable for all involved. So look for that in the coming board meeting. What else? Did we do anything else in the last stuff? We just talked a lot. That's it. And the other part of the president's report that I wanted to report is the federal government is reviewing the nutritional guidelines. There was a very good article in the New York Times this week. They're taking, they're putting much more emphasis on fat and sugar and processed foods in what school districts offer to their students. I look forward to the new guidelines. It is going to affect the services that we offer, but I think it's going to offer more healthier options and more well-balanced, well-balanced option and fresher, more fresh vegetables as well. And also acknowledge different eating styles, like gluten-free, veganism, and vegetarianism as well. So I look forward to those from the federal government to be implemented. That's it on the president's report. Old business, that we have a motion to approve the revised board meeting calendar for 2015. I have a few questions on it, but I'll let anybody else speak first.
Is there a motion on the table?
Well, it says approval of revised board meeting calendar.
Did we have a calendar that went past the end of the school year?
No.
I believe that the last calendar only went to August. I think this one takes it out to discuss.
It should be in other.
Oh, 2014 to 15?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other reason was to change the start time in order to allow the board to convene earlier and recess to executive session.
Oh, yeah, we're adding.
So, but let me clarify.
So is this going to be clarified for the public?
I'm going to clarify that right now. The Board of Education is going, for legal reasons, is going to be coming into open session at 6:30 and then immediately recessing into closed session for an hour. We will not be starting a public meeting, well, we will be starting the public meeting at 6:30. We will not be starting the public portion until 7:30 at any given time. But for legal reasons, we will be notifying a 6:30 start time. So just to clarify that.
Okay.
I have a concern about the time between March and April. It's over, it's about a month, it's a month for meetings.
We do have spring.
I know spring break is in there. It's also budget time. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to add, we're going to have to have a meeting.
So, yeah, I mean, and I think that what happens is we end up having to add a meeting, but I don't think we have to codify that.
Okay. So after the conversation, the next meeting, which will be March 9th and then 23rd, and after the 23rd, if we need to add a meeting, we will do so.
Right.
Okay. Is there any comments? I get a motion. Yep.
I don't know if I can comment here, but I think that there's a lot on our plate, like was mentioned. And I'm looking at these dates and I'm thinking that, you know, this is quite a bit, but I think we need actually more. I don't know that we can add, but it just seems like the amount of stuff that we have to digest and all of the different issues that we have that we're dealing with, you know, it just seems like a lot. Like, I have notes here that go on for days. And I know I've been talking a lot tonight, so I just feel overwhelmed by everything that we need to work on. And, you know, we haven't really even touched on a lot of this stuff, so I was just wondering if that's a possibility to add more than just the one, but, you know, I would think that.
More than just the one in April, or?
Well, I was thinking that, you know, we might want to consider, and I know everyone's got jobs and families, but might want to consider a meeting on alternating weeks for committee meetings to be able to, you know, shorten up the time that we're starting. We could actually start at 6:30 for our public meeting.
I can't start, I can't start.
So, okay.
But here's something that you should know. If your committee is amenable, you can arrange additional meetings. If you feel like you're not, if you feel, because, for example, when we start reviewing policy, you may feel that you are not going to have enough time. You probably are not going to have enough time to review policy and do the work of your committee. So you can, you can arrange for additional meetings. You can meet here, or you can meet at one of your houses. That's perfectly acceptable.
And not on a Monday.
Okay.
Not on a Monday. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be an official meeting day.
Okay.
Because you are only three members, so it's not, you know, it doesn't count as a.
Right. I wasn't aware of that because, you know, again, like, the information that we're getting is the same time that we're getting, same time that the public is getting the information. So I didn't have any longer to view this information, any longer than anyone else in town. And it feels like, as a board member, I would like to be able to do a better job than what I can get done on the weekend.
Well, as, the committee process should be predictive of what's going to be on the agenda for the following week. So things that we discuss in committee this week should appear on the agenda for the following, for the following meeting.
Okay.
So once we get into the flow, I think you'll notice that that is the case. And you'll have time to digest and make comments to the administration before the public and before it is put on for the motion. Because we all, I think we all agree that this is a lot to digest. It's always, it always has been.
I'm glad I'm not minority.
I'm sorry, are you saying that committee, what we do in committee is something that would be on an agenda two weeks from now? Because we've never done that.
That's what we try to do, and it normally is.
So, for example, if you discuss something in the curriculum committee?
Right.
It will appear on the following agenda.
No, I mean, I understand that. I just don't know that that's ever been our practice. I mean, as long as I've been on the board, we've.
It never has not been.
Committee has been, we talk about whatever's on the agenda that night.
Well, you talk about what's on the agenda, but you also, on the report, there's two parts of the committee meetings for least finance. It has always been, you talk, you discuss what is on the agenda, and then you discuss upcoming issues and motions that will be needed.
Personnel is an exception to this. So, I mean, it doesn't happen, but it certainly does happen in curriculum. And I think it also happens in finance.
Finance, Linda is great at preparing notes on. Can I actually have the finance report? And the, so there's two parts of it. There's the agenda item, and then there's a report item. So the report items are what's coming up for the finance committee and for the overall board, and it's normally discussed throughout what to report on and how to, and what the board can expect for a coming meeting. And the curriculum is the same, curriculum is the same way.
Okay. So, I guess if anything is left over from tonight that can be reviewed any other time with committee meeting members, sorry, committee members, and then, it's getting really late, I'm sorry. And then, I don't, I mean, I get this information on the same day as the public, is what I'm saying, so.
Well, you get the agenda on the same day as the public. You also get a lot of, a lot of additional materials, or access to a lot of additional materials on the shared drive.
Right, yeah, yeah. And now, I can definitely keep myself plenty busy looking at those things. I guess I was just wondering what the procedure was in order to get together and speak about these things, rather than just, you know, in the vacuum of my home by myself.
So, the hardest thing that I always dealt with was the fact that we actually don't run the school. The administration runs the school.
Absolutely.
So, when things come to us, it's more of an advise and consent area than it is dictation of what is going on. So, when we, I guess what, kind of what I'm trying to say is sometimes we're powerless, and I felt that for a very long time when I was a new board member. But in terms of the conversations, the conversations happen here, in new business and old business, in the committee, in the committee reports, and any additional information, we try to get to every board, out to every board member at the same time as well.
Yeah. No, that's understood. The conversation happens here. I just, I feel like, just in order to be informed about making decisions, not running the school, not deciding what's best, but just to be able to, you know, know, do we have an elective, you know, do we have physics, too? Do we, like, any of these things that, you know, you can't possibly know.
It's a lot of questions, like, two minutes before the meeting.
Yeah.
Right. And of course, the website doesn't help, but, you know, that's soon to be fixed.
But, I mean, that stuff is actually available on the website. If you wanted to find.
Like, the high school coursebook.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's current, with those classes are all actually being offered this year, the ones in the, from the September.
So, in the high school, there are, the coursebook is normally a three-to-five-year coursebook.
So, not every course is offered every year. There are some courses that are offered in alternate years, but all of those courses are still being offered in some way or shape or form.
Right. And like AP Chem and AP Physics are rotated every year, same with AP, same with AP English Language and foreign, and AP Lit and Lang, because we just don't have enough enrollment to fill them every year. So, we give each senior and junior a chance to enroll in each of them, but they have to, they take it in alternate years.
I guess, I mean, at some point, it might be nice to have a sort of a different committee structure or timeline where we, you know, we saw things tonight, and then we voted on them at the next meeting. I'm not sure how possible that is, but it would, you know.
So, we did, for a while, this board did have two different meetings. One meeting with no motions at all.
Right.
Would be only committee reports. So, let's say tonight is the first meeting of the month. It would be reports on the committees. It would be discussions on committees, and the following week, the following meeting would be all, all motions and changes to that. The issue came with that was that there was too much time, there was not enough time in between meetings to make changes, and there was also emergent issues that came up that the board needed to act on, and once those emergent issues came up, something else became a little bit more emergent, and it kind of snowballed into where we are today.
This, I've mentioned this after I went to the school board's workshop in whatever month that was now, I'm sorry, my brain can't work with that thing going off thirty-three seconds, but there is another district that set out a template for a really successful board committee structure that works kind of more that way. So, I mean, it's something I'll, you know, I'll gather that information again and present.
It just, it was something that I'm, at this point, not necessarily supportive of because we tried it and it just.
This is, I think it's a different structure, so.
I'm happy to, we're happy to look at it.
Thank you for all that clarification.
Yeah. And in terms of meetings, we try to do two a month. For the most part, we do. There's a lot of work that goes in by our administration to prepare for a meeting for us, as much as I like to think we are the most important people, the amount of, the amount of stuff that you guys have, that they have to do to cut, just get us, the nine of us, information that we, that we want, it takes up a number of hours that sometimes we better spend actually managing students and staff, so.
And there's a timeframe to all of that. I mean, Linda knows that all this information is due to my office by a certain time. You know, Linda knows that the information is due to my office at a certain given time, and then they'll give us enough opportunities to forward the information to you so you can have enough time to review all of the documents, but, so there's a lot of work behind.
I hope I didn't come across as complaining about that.
No, no, no.
Not at all.
It was more of a structural thing, not a, we didn't get enough information.
No, no. All right. So, we do need a motion to approve the calendar for the 2015 school year.
I thought.
Year. Because this includes, this includes beyond August.
The board made a calendar.
The board calendar.
Consider December fourteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherbert?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Is there any other old business? New business, let's first address the approval of the district calendar. We received a number of emails about approving the calendar for the next school year to make everybody's planning a little bit easier. We're going to move it tonight. It is on your, it is on your drive. We are offering one hundred and eighty days this year. We, I know this, the contract says the board offers one hundred and eighty-two days, or the policy says we offer one hundred and eighty, the contract says we have one hundred and eighty-two days. We're using those two extra days for professional development in the beginning of the year.
That's what, right, professional development that we're front-loading.
Yeah.
Sounds.
So, are there any comments because of, or not?
May I just clarify that?
Absolutely.
That's September first, second, third, and fourth, those are staff days, all four of them?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
I know, but they're not, I think, I don't think all four days are staff days because that would.
That would be four.
Then that's four days, not two, yes.
Yeah, only two of those days are staff days.
Just want to make sure students aren't coming in on two of those.
No, no. Two are PD, two are PD days, and then the other two are to set up classroom and.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it says one, two is staff PD.
Yeah.
We didn't know what three and four were. Great, thanks.
It's to come in classroom, set up classroom and all that.
Two PDs, one classroom prep, and one meeting with the principals and with the guidance counselors, all right.
And I believe we're going to do a, some sort of party or something this year as well?
You know.
Maybe.
Give the teachers a barbecue.
A barbecue.
Barbecue, nice.
Is it me or is spring break really long next year?
I didn't have a problem with that.
I'm not saying I have a problem with it, it just looks.
It's not longer than winter break was, winter break this year was.
No, I know, winter break was.
Right. Two weeks.
It's, where do you say, two weeks?
No, two weeks in December, I was looking, it was not really two.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's pretty close. It's the same as it usually is.
It's Good Friday off, yeah, and the half-day. And, yeah, Friday, okay, yeah. No, I don't think it is longer than normal.
Is it? Okay.
I think it usually, often that you end up with the Easter Monday being the last day, and so if you just switch that Friday to a Monday, it'll all, it'll all look right.
By the way, there is no, there is no Easter Monday, there is no Easter Monday this year. Letting, making that clear. Just, we're not taking off. It's not a half-day.
It's already off.
It's already off.
It's built into the week.
Way to lay down the law, Adam.
That's the semantic, that's the semantic side of me. It's, I was looking at the, I thought the fourth was Easter Monday.
Nope.
I wanted to make a point.
I did want to make that point.
He was so tough, it was good.
I did.
You call it Easter Monday, you call it what you want.
Debate's on that day. Okay.
And do we have a, I think, didn't we last year indicate that a couple of days, that if we had too many snow days, they'd start coming off the top? Like, I think President's Day was one, and.
Yeah, is that not the yellow?
It's already built in towards the end.
The yellow box.
The yellow box. Okay, so that's there, okay.
It's already built in.
Okay, wonderful.
And it's just nice to see that there's professional development in May and April.
Yes.
Very good.
Fantastic.
Just wanted to say, good job.
Can we, do we have a motion on the table yet? Have a motion to approve the calendar if there's no more comments?
So moved.
I count on you.
Is there another, is there a second?
Second.
My first time.
Very good question. Is it, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherbert?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. So, the Park resolution. The Park resolution will not be put forth today, it will be tabled. There will not, well, the board will not be submitting a resolution, but we are going to be sending a letter home discussing the overall procedure for Park. The board, so with consultation with our attorney and Mr. Soto, the board will, we have received a number of emails and letters of parents who are asking to refuse the test. We are going to accommodate that and provide a alternate, there's going to be a few options outlined in the, in the letter. One being a student being able to stay at home with no repercussions, and one also being a alternate setting for, for the student whose parents refuse to opt out, sorry, who refuse to take the test. So.
Getting very late.
The, sorry, the letter, the letter will be sent home. The board is asking, and the administration is asking for any parent who does refuse to notify us, and otherwise, we will have some difficulties on test day, but a refusal letter is going to be required to accommodate a student. Would you like to speak to it a little bit further?
Yeah, just, just very quickly. We have been receiving refusal letters. I will be writing a personal letter to each parent. We're going to differentiate the type of activities that the students will be engaged in that particular day. I know Adam had mentioned the possibilities of kids staying home. We're going to encourage kids to come to school. We're going to be providing an alternate setting, and we're going to give them the opportunity to either read a book or some instructional activities to engage in. So, we do have, I spoke to all of the principals, we have the settings in place, and we have the people to monitor the students. So, I'm going to be encouraging all of the parents who have the kids come to school. You should be getting a letter no later than Wednesday. Yeah, all right. I'm actually almost finished drafting the letter.
And I just want to say on one general topic, if this test was not mandated by the state, I think it would be the general consensus of this board to not offer it. We are in a very tricky predicament right now, but it is a, it is a mandate from the state, and it is the situation we are presented with, and we're trying to accommodate everybody's needs and wants in terms of this tricky situation. So, I hope everybody's been patient with us, and I thank everybody for their input from both sides, and hopefully we will move forward in a very positive way.
And I just want to say how much I appreciate, you know, the growth on this subject from last year to this year, and I appreciate Mr. Soto's work on this and the board's work on this, and to what you're saying, Adam, about whether the district would choose to or not to administer it, I don't, you know, I don't think that's within our purview, but what I would encourage people to do is, it's not just the state that mandates this, this is actually a federal mandate. This is one of these things that is federal policy, it rolls down to state policy, and, you know, districts and boards then end up on the front line of these issues when it is, it is so far outside of our control. But currently, right now, the federal government is working on reauthorizing ESEA, which is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which is also better known as the No Child Left Behind Act. Part of the conversation around that reauthorization is whether or not to continue with the mandate for annual testing. It's probably one of the most hotly contested parts of that reauthorization, and that conversation is happening now. In fact, the House is set to vote on their version of the reauthorization bill on Friday. An organization that I'm involved with and work with, the Network for Public Education, actually has a current letter-writing campaign to federal representatives in the U.S. House of Representatives to ask them to do away with that mandate, to ask them to return to pre-NCLB testing levels, which was actually grade span testing, which was testing students once in elementary, once in middle, once in high school. I think there is a broad consensus among educators and a lot of education researchers that that is more than sufficient to provide both state and federal governments with the accountability measures that they require to know that students are achieving at the levels that we expect without creating this kind of impact that we're starting to see from the over-testing that I think a lot of parents and educators feel are now happening in public education. So, I would encourage anyone here tonight, or anybody watching at home, to go to networkforpubliceducation.org and take a look at that letter-writing campaign, and consider sending a letter to your congressman for us, to Frank Pallone.
Thank you. I do also just want to say that this procedure is going to be in place for this year and this year alone. It will be reevaluated, and whatever comes from the state and the federal government will be taken into account, and whatever learnings we have from the way that this is handled this year will also be taken into account.
Yeah, just one more detail. I don't want to offend any of the parents. We have the number of students that are not going to be taking the test. However, I would be remiss as a superintendent if I didn't put my piece to encourage parents to reconsider, so that's going to be a piece that will be added to that letter, and if we do not get any reconsideration, then we move forward to the next step.
It is my serious concern that this is going to segregate and make our students different when high school, when middle school and bar to schools are a time where students are already different and differences are noted and taken into account. So, I have the same concerns, and I would encourage everybody to reconsider as well.
I just, one thing to say on that is that I do think that my experience last year with my son was, for him personally, empowering. This was a kid who felt that he didn't have a choice in pretty much anything that happened at school, and this was an empowering experience for him, and I don't know that I can speak to every child, it's, you know, impossible for me, but I was pleasantly surprised at his experience in standing up for what he thought was the right thing to do. So, I just hope that we, moving forward, take Brian Graff's suggestion to advocate and really place blame where it belongs, and it certainly doesn't belong at the district level, as far as I can tell. It doesn't belong sometimes at the state level. You know, it really is every single family deciding what they think is right to do, and I think we need to help educate parents about what is happening on the federal level, and I want to think publicly, thank Darcy for doing her work with the Network for Public Education, because I don't know that I knew half as much as I knew last year as I do this year. It's a lot to keep up with, so I understand we're going to have to revisit it next year, every year after that, but I think that I would personally like to encourage parents to go seek out information and certainly come on Thursday to the HPEA event at the high school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Is there any other new business?
Yep.
Forgive me if I stray back to something, but in terms of the mascots, so we were going to consider it and bring it to discussion next week, correct?
I guess, I mean, I was quite convinced by Saskia's presentation and her clarification. I think what we should do is, we should have, allow, open it, give it back to the principals just for any comments, but I guess if you would like to have a conversation at the board, and if the board wants to weigh in after we weigh on them a little, think about them a little bit, I'm more than happy to ask.
That was the impression I got from what you said before. And then, one quick question on that. Saskia Marina is, in essence, a somewhat an employee of the school district?
She's a volunteer of the school.
Well, does the, since she's doing this work as a volunteer for the school district, does the school district own all the rights to any of the material that she creates?
I think she set that up for us.
Yes.
Chris, yeah, she set it up, and we do, yeah, she set it up for us so that we own it.
So that we own it, okay, great. And then my second thing would be, there was a number of items in the budget related to technology. I still have an underlying concern that we don't have a technology plan that goes past 2016, and I'd like to see something done, I mean, we had a number of technology plan review meetings, et cetera, last year. I'd like to see a technology plan put together that encompasses, because we're going to have to resubmit to the county, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
So where would we be at in terms of a comprehensive technology plan moving past the 2016 year?
When do we normally initiate, sorry, go ahead.
We, in fact...
Go ahead, something.
I believe the district had a three-year technology plan, and so, you know, because of CUSAC and a number of other initiatives that we're focusing on, I haven't met with Brian yet, and so certainly, Linda, please, you know, touch base with me tomorrow to, to schedule a meeting with Brian so we can begin the process, okay? And we will welcome your, and I know this is an area that you seem to be, you have a certain level of expertise, so I welcome your input on this one.
Yeah, we should, we should create a committee of parents, teachers, board members. There's a checklist actually on the report of who should be included.
So, like I said, I have this list here, I just want to add that the study commission that the governor actually put together, they're still taking testimony via email about the Park testing from anyone. My children, actually, I told them about this, and they decided they were going to write an email about their experience with the testing. So I don't know if this is appropriate, but I want to give the email. So the study commission is studycommission@doe.state nj.us, and like I said, they're, they're still gathering testimony, and they have published it online. So if anyone would like to hear what people have been saying at these different events, it would be great, because I attended the one in Jackson, I attended the one in Blackwood, New Jersey. It was six hours in Jackson, it was four hours in Blackwood, and only one person spoke up in defense of Park, and they were a PTA-paid performer, I'll call them. It was incredible. So I do encourage people to read the testimony and submit.
No, sorry, sorry, we can't.
Can't you just forget?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Oh, sorry, it's studycommission@doe.state nj.us.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other new business?
Yes. This sounds like trivia compared to, you know, the issues we've been talking about, the recess thing at Bardo. There is quite a bit of parental concern about that. I realize it's been cold and all this stuff. I appreciate your candor in just saying that you don't have the resources to do outdoor recess when it's cold out, and, I don't know, I'm wondering if there's any way we can look at that. Is it that we don't have enough paras who are available to go out for recess? I've volunteered to Mr. Benjamin to try to put together, you know, a library of used outerwear for kids who might not come to school appropriately dressed. If that's an issue, that's something that, as a PTO member, I'd be happy to help with. Is there any movement there, any member movements?
Actually, I have something to tag on to that. Was that actually an issue because of the schedule change? Because I felt like my daughters were saying they were in the classroom before the schedule changed, so it didn't seem to me like it was actually just because of the schedule change. It seemed like my daughters were in the classroom before the schedule changed.
I know it became an issue at Irving. That's, that's a definite thing. At Irving, it became an issue. I don't, I'm not too familiarized that becoming an issue here at Bardo. I'll have that conversation with Benjamin. I do know that in the past, at least for Irving, during the wintertime, the kids used to go to the gym, but now the gym is being occupied during their lunch.
Right.
All right, and we don't have enough space, you know, in the lunchrooms, because obviously the kids are eating lunch. So the issue pertaining to Bardo, I would have to speak to Mr. Benjamin about that one.
I know he's been thinking about it, I'm sure he's overwhelmed with everything happening right now.
Yeah, and I've been in touch with Sarah Kirk about this, because my daughter, you know, everyone's kids, it seems like, are crawling the walls, and, you know, they're allowed to walk in circles in the auditorium, they're allowed to play games. I asked if she could have a jump rope, and they said they had jump ropes, but then they got rid of them, maybe there was some reason for that. But I, I know that Ms. Kirk said that she was concerned about this as a former gym teacher. So I don't know if it's a good suggestion, but could they possibly have, like, some sort of guided exercise with the teacher? Could they do jumping jacks?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, that seems...
That's good.
And by the way, that's not germane to Bardo or Irving, that's, that's happening across the state.
Absolutely.
You know, when I was a principal, that was the same situation. I used to call it the shining effect. Did you ever see the movie The Shining?
Yeah.
And so it was wintertime when you put kids too long together, things start to happen, because they need to go outside.
Me too, yeah.
All right, then. So I'll speak to Mr. Benjamin about that tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Is there any other new business?
Just one quick thing.
Yep.
During the public comment about the bilingual advisory committee, I just was wondering, would it be possible to ask the member of the public for a citation to the OCR data? I tried to Google it just now, I couldn't find it.
Was it not in the letter?
I don't think it was in the letter, I mean, I read the letter a couple of weeks ago.
I have to say, I'm not a big fan of this not being able to have a simple interaction if somebody's up there and holding it all to new business, and like us to think about that a little.
There are some...
Oh, maybe it is in there, I'm sorry. It's been a while since I looked at it. Oh, it is in there. Sorry.
Not really.
It wasn't your email, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, sorry. It's just, we're trying to follow the procedure as much as we can.
Open now, there's public comments.
Yeah, I was about to say, we're about to open it up for public comment, so.
I still had something else for new business that's left over. Just a thought that I had, actually, based on Saskia getting up and everyone commending her for, you know, doing this great volunteer work, and Catherine saying, you know, how much she enjoyed having all these grants to, you know, to report out. Is it possible that we could consider putting out an advertisement for a volunteer grant writer for the district?
Sure.
Like, put those two together. I mean, look at what we're looking at for a budget, I don't know that we were going to create a budget line for that, but there have got to be a number of people in this community that have grant-writing expertise, that would be, if we could get one, two, three of them to each, you know, look at one or two grants that could potentially bring us in a nice chunk of change.
I know Ms. Passatchow is working with one of them as a volunteer, and I don't know what, you know, the success of that has been, but they've been working together.
This would be a wonderful thing to put in our lose letter, it could be something we put out for the public information committee, ask them to put out in their, you know, Highland Park, whatever the paper is that comes out to us, I mean, just kind of put out a general call that we're, you know, we're looking for, for help for grant writing.
Can you write something up and get it out?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Of course, I have something else to say, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I know that we were talking about the, the need for the LEP advisory committee, the public advisory committee. I also wonder, do we have, what do we have as a course offering Spanish for native speakers?
No, not that I know of.
And I know that we have a major, like, a lot of Mandarin speakers in our district. I would assume we do have a large number of Spanish-speaking students.
We used to have that, I know that, I, yeah, if, it could have gone, I think it actually might have gone with, that was Spanish 5, I believe, or was that a different class? I don't know, the answer is, but we used to, we used to have for native. We'll look into it, we'll look into it.
That would be great, because I'd, I'd be, you know, completely bored out of my mind if I was a native Spanish speaker sitting in a Spanish class.
Well, I think the language has been like an issue for a while with children, even if it's not your native language, if you're just excelling in it, and then you got to a certain point, and there isn't a Spanish 4 and a Spanish 5.
Yeah.
Those kids were either forced to either, you know, maybe take French 1, but I think that just comes, unfortunately, just with the size of the district and the lack of students that would be taking that class.
I see.
I think you hit the nail on the head.
Unfortunately.
I mean, we combined.
If we could do it, but, but it's probably something we could revisit, but that's...
You hit the nail on the head. We combined, we combined Spanish 4 and 5 at one point, because there just wasn't enough enrollment for...
Now, we have more, just because the middle school program is stronger, and so the kids are going into Spanish 5, and I think that's...
So it's something that we should look at.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
Okay.
And I had one more question about the Park.
Yeah.
It looks like if we're overlapping the schedules for the Park being taken at Bardo, middle and high school, it looks like the entire month of March, we are somehow related to the Park, somehow doing something Park-related. So the computers that we have available that I, you know, I would love for them to be used for instructional purposes, are they all being set aside for Park test-taking? Because I don't know that we have, we don't have a one-to-one computer to student ratio, I know that, so it's not as if some kids can still do their schoolwork and classwork on the Chromebooks. So it would be nice to have numbers behind, you know, to understand what, how this test is taxing our classrooms.
Do, do all the, the separate schools have schedules now for Park? Because, I mean, that was something that at the meeting that wasn't, is, so is, when is that information going to be?
They've been sent out.
Yeah, I just saw something.
Oh, really?
For Bardo.
Letters went out already.
Oh, okay.
All the schools, all three schools sent out their letters.
Saying when the testing administration dates were.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we're not getting rid of midterms and finals like other districts have been?
No.
I like that.
Okay. Is there any other new business?
The GNT stuff that I printed out.
Okay.
I found some interesting research that actually dates to 1992, and then supplemental stuff that backs it up from September 2014, and it just, it talks about tracking and ability grouping, and I know that this was, you know, hot topic last year, and there were some issues with implementing and not implementing, whatever, but I just wanted to pass this to everyone and make copies for everybody, so that we could better educate ourselves about what that means. So I'll just pass this out, and maybe we can discuss it for next time.
So it's clear, and as I said, and I said earlier...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, there's a sense of the board, I think, that the GNT program needs to be looked at, at greater detail. I think we will not necessarily have time to do that before or during budget season, but for, after budget season, it might be one of the first things to go on the agenda to get a report on, and for, to implement for the following year if there is any changes.
Okay, I was just hoping that we could, you know, like I said, the reading specialist issue, maybe integrating that, so...
So that's definitely a budget conversation, so we're going to have to have that during budget time. So just a greater GNT conversation of identification, needs, appropriate use of funds, that probably will have to happen after budget, but in terms of services, that can happen during the budget presentations.
Okay, great.
Sound good?
Yep.
Perfect.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Anything from this side of the aisle?
Side, no.
Seeing no new business, let's move on to public comment. The Highland Park Board of, actually, Highland Park Board of Education recognizes public participation and reserve this time for your comments.
Hi, I have some comments about the Park. My name's Allison Salerno, I live on Grant Avenue. I have a, like, a logistics question. I understand you're setting a policy that the parents have to write a refusal letter. What do you plan to do in the event that a kid shows up for Park testing and tells the proctor, "I'm not taking the test"? What's the plan? I mean, in an ideal world, you're going to get all the refusal letters on time, but what are you going to do if a kid says, "I'm not, I'm refusing the test"?
It becomes a, it becomes...
Matthew, Mr. Soto.
It's a discipline.
It is a discipline.
Yeah.
Okay, because other districts are handling it differently. Like, the district where I work, we were told, you know, yeah, ideally, they absolutely need a refusal letter, but if a kid shows up to your room, your test room, and says, "I'm refusing the test," they can refuse the test. And in our district, we're not providing with an alternate location, so I realize that decision makes it trickier. We're just saying they have, they can bring in recreational reading. But I guess I would be concerned about that kid, because they're not necessarily, they're not being disruptive in the, in the traditional sense of a kid disrupting a class in the ways that we're familiar with. So I just would, I would hope you think about that a little bit, because not all parents are organized, not all, you know, sometimes people make decisions the day before, that kind of thing, and I would hate to see a child like that receive a discipline that's really not fitting the quote-quote crime. That just doesn't make sense to me. The other thing I want to say is that I did have a test, as you know, I did have a test-refusing child last year on Pearson's New Jersey Bio Competency Exam, which has, whatever. Not a test that I think is worth a student's time, or at least my student's time, my child's time. He received more than one negative comment from staff members about his, not, not, much less from his peers, but we can't control what parents are saying to their children, which ends up in the cafeteria, whatever. But I would really encourage you, because the board has made its disdain known, some of the board members, for people who refuse to have, you know, have their children refuse tests, and I just would really, I really see it as a parental decision, and I would really ask you, Mr. Soto, to make sure your staff treats all children respectfully regardless of what kind of decisions their parents make. As a teacher, I would never comment on any, really any aspect of a child's family life, you know, their religion, their choice of dress, or their decision to refuse or not refuse a test. And I was very disappointed that more than one staff member made a comment to my child saying that he, that Lucas was making the district look bad, and I don't know where that came from, if it was just the teacher's opinion, if it was the former superintendent's opinion, but that, we don't, I don't want that. I don't want other kids to have to deal with that kind of, frankly, obnoxious commentary from a teacher. It's, it's just really unkind and uncalled for. So I wouldn't, while the board, Mr. Sherman's made it clear, and you're saying you want to encourage people to take the test, you don't think it's right, the parents are refusing, these are really personal decisions that families are making, and our personal opinions about it are irrelevant if you're in an education, education setting. So again, I don't want those kids to have to deal with comments like that.
I'm going to be honest with you, so you're surprising me with that comment?
I did tell you about it at the time.
And I'm a little bit upset that any of...
No, 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 I told you, I, you have so much on your plate, but I did email you about that at the time, and you said, I emailed the teacher, I'm not going to say the person's name.
No, no, no.
I emailed you and the teacher, and you said it was addressed. I don't expect you to remember every email you ever got.
All right, all right. So this is, so this is not another, this is, we're talking about the, last year, okay, I got it now, I got it.
I'm just saying, moving forward, I think it's important for staff to keep their personal opinions out of those kind of decisions, just like, just like staff does with other family decisions.
I concur with you, absolutely.
They don't necessarily agree with. Parents do all kinds of things that we don't agree with.
I appreciate that, absolutely. I thought it happened this year, okay.
You would have heard from me already.
I'm sure I would have.
I just want to clarify one thing, that it's not that I, I don't think it's right that parents refuse, it's just I would encourage everybody to be similar and equal in this district, and that's where my, my viewpoint comes from. So it's, it's within your right, it's fine, I have no, I'm not, it's not a judgment of you or any parent, it's...
Okay. And the other thing is, I do, I want to echo what Brian Graff said, I really do encourage all board members, there are plenty of pressures on the, on local Board of Education, and I mean, local control, the whole idea of home rule is like almost quaint at this point. There are so many state and federal mandates, but it's very disappointing to have been chided by a former Board of Education president about, "We need to go to Trenton, and we need to do this." I've been to Trenton, my son testified in Camden. I also work full-time, I have a family, a house, et cetera, and I really would like to see more leadership from our board, other than that resolution you did last year. I really, I'm just a voter, I'm not, I don't have any position of power, and you people